Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Shenandoah City Council Meeting for August 27, 2025. I look around and I see that everyone is here except for Councilman Summerlin. He is not feeling too well tonight, so, but we do have a quorum. We're going to stand up and say the Pledge of Allegiance, and if you would like to stay standing for a short invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'm on the Texas side. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Indication is going to be delivered by Councilman Robinson.
If you would bow your heads and join me for a moment in prayer. Our heavenly Father, we come before you tonight with humble hearts and gratitude. We thank you for being a God of love who is with us in this very room. You never leave us or forsake us. Tonight, Father, we ask that you would guide us as we deliberate the business of our city. We ask, Father, that you would also give us your providence, protect us, surround us with your holy angels, protect our public safety, protect our staff, protect the council, protect our citizens. We ask all of this in the name of our blessed Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
All right, we're going to move on to item number five on the agenda. Citizens forum. Citizens are invited to speak for three minutes on matters relating to city government that relate to agenda or non-agenda items. Speakers are asked to approach the podium and give their name and address before sharing their comments. Our first speaker is former Mayor of Shenandoah, Bob Knight.
Well, as the mayor said, my name is Bob Knight, 722 Saddlewood. Good evening, gentlemen. I've spoken to you before on the possibility of creating a commission or board to augment the efforts of our SVP in utilizing the vast sums of hot taxes we currently have, as well as the future monies to more effectively promote our city's hotels as the place to stay for any event or occasion in South Montgomery County. And I'm happy to see that you have it on the agenda tonight, a discussion to consider creating such a board. As you deliberate on this matter, I would ask that you consider the fiduciary responsibility the city has in utilizing these funds and realize, as many other cities have realized, that such a board does not replace our SVP, but rather enhances it by bringing in ideas and structure from the many affiliated views on the board, rather than a single person's views on the best way to use these funds, which amount to about seven times the entire city budget when I was mayor. The best example I can give of this is the newly created theme on the Visitors Bureau website, or at least it was on social media. And after discussions between citizens, council members, and the city administrator about showcasing Shenandoah as being in the middle of all that goes on around us, I think the SVP has hit a home run with their new theme and is an important first step in demonstrating that different points of view and ideas can bring about loftier results, unintended. As far as the makeup of the board is concerned, I would think this council could look at other forward-looking cities our size and have such a board and/or consult with TML for guidance, but in my mind, I think a board of five to seven people, consisting of representation from the hotels, the council, the staff, and citizens would be ideal. Together, such a board could create the mayor's vision of Shenandoah being the pearl and the oyster of South Montgomery County, come to fruition, and bring more people to our hotels, our stores, our restaurants, and entertainment venues. Once again, I thank you for considering this idea, and I would encourage you to adopt this measure.
Thank you. Thank you, Bob. The next speaker is Ms. Laura Kratz.
Laura Kratz, 735 Thornwood. Good evening, and I just wanted to let you know that I'm also speaking for several of the other residents on Rosewood that are unable to be here tonight. I think we just need to talk about a little more transparency about this master park plan. I know, Mayor, you said, it's been verbalized that the Rosewood Trust and Cedarwood are off the table for this plan, but yet they still appear on the plan in writing, so I'd like to see in writing that they are off the plan. I think the whole idea of another splash pad at the pool is redundancy. We need to just take care of what we already have. We have issues at the splash pad and the pool, and also, you know, where on the east side for sure, we're looking at land for parks on the east side of the city. And I'm just curious, too, with this whole plan, is there any deceitfulness in where you want the money from? Are you trying to get it from another? You created this plan and just to get it from another government agency, so please listen to the residents regarding that. And also wanted to make note, Mr. Raymaker, that I didn't bring a pitchfork or torch tonight. We didn't appreciate the comment. We thought it was pretty rude that an unprofessional, of someone sitting on a council representing the city, would say such a thing to or about the residents, so...
I did say that I did not want to vote for it.
True, but you also said to someone, "Did you bring your pitchfork and that, too?" And we were not, we did not appreciate that comment. I don't think residents should be addressed in such a manner by someone sitting on a city council, an elected position, representing individuals and constituents. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Rose Elkins.
My name is Rose Elkins. I live at 29202 Cedarwood, between the park and the pool. And the thing that I want to discuss is, and it may be off the plan by now, but they want to put the sidewalk in front of our house. There's four houses there, from the pool to the park. They told us when they did the curbing and guttering through that subdivision that they asked us if we wanted it, and all of us said no, and we signed a deal, a piece of paper that said you wouldn't do that, so we're still hoping that is still the plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Brenda Booth.
Brenda?
Hi, I'm Brenda Booth. I'm at 29201 Cedarwood. I've been a resident for 29 years. My backyard backs up into the swings at the park. I have been one of those citizen watch residents, so I am one that can alert anyone who has mischief going on at the park, alarms going on at the park, and, you know, different things that's happened. So I'm here today to talk about the hours of the park. It's been a little bit confusing when there's multiple hours being offered, and I'll just tell you, for the health and the benefit of our residents, I recommend 8:00 AM as an opening for the park and 10:00 PM for closing. And I will say that I have had a number of teenagers that don't like to get out of the park at night playing basketball, so that is a concern for me, to be able to sleep and then go to work. And additionally, like my neighbor, Ms. Elkins, the item number eight, if it has anything to do with the sidewalks, we were not in agreement with that, and I would not like that to happen. That's all I have today. Thank you.
Thanks, Brenda.
Thank you. Next speaker is Jean Teague.
Good evening, Jean Teague. I live in Shenandoah Valley. I'm here also to talk about the park plan again. Like my neighbors have brought up, that when the infrastructure project was done, the residents voted down sidewalks in the community. But when our final phase, our section, was going under construction, a pathway reappeared between the pool and the park. And 100% of the residents that were affected by that pathway submitted a letter, and the city removed it from the plan. So it was surprising to see that the new updated plan had the pathway back. So I would like to request that you honor that from back in 2011 and remove it from the plan, unless you plan to put pathways throughout the entire city on every street, because choosing one street over another does not... Children and people walk on all the streets, so it doesn't make any sense. Secondly, regarding the hours, I know it's on for discussion, but I would like to hear some discussion on who's going to enforce those rules, the new hours. We have a problem with enforcement because code enforcement is not here 8:00 to 5:00. That means that if people are at the park at 10:00 or on Saturday, code enforcement is not here to enforce that. We've had that problem with dogs, and I can foresee this problem with the hours of a park not being able to be enforced. Or perhaps it's going to go to a different department to enforce them, but I would like to hear some discussion on that. Thank you.
All right. We're going to move on to item number six. Discussion on possible action regarding the Republic Services contract.
Mayor and council, as discussed at the last meeting of Budget Workshop, council wanted to see this again, to look at replacing one of the base bid items for recycling, where all customers would have recycling, with alternate item nine, which is for subscription-based recycling like we currently have. So that's what's presented before you today. I will also mention that representative from Republic Services is here, so if you have any other questions or any other discussion, Laura is able to help answer any questions that you may have.
So I guess I would ask, what are our options with Republic on that topic? Your point of view.
Good evening, council. Laura Kepart with Republic Services. This is really, it's like a buffet for you. So the base bid was everyone trash once a week, everyone recycle once a week. But the alternate bid, that everyone having recycle would be replaced by the subscription recycle, which is what you currently have, should the council choose that. Completely up to you guys.
Well, there was also two prices, one for $8 and one for $4 something.
Correct. If everyone has it, it was four...
$4.49.
$4.49, was it? And if we stay with...
Right, and that was the one that's asking everybody who doesn't recycle to subsidize those who do.
Correct. And that is the model in probably 95% of cities that recycle. Subscription recycle is rare, but you guys do it, it works for you, so if you want to continue, then we'll do that, and the price would remain what it is now.
So it's just a matter of who pays that extra $4?
Yes, sir, yes.
Residents or...
Yes, sir. If you decide to pass it on or not.
On a subscription basis, which is what I thought it was, myself, okay? When I heard that, when I heard that everyone, and no one ever discussed it before with any resident, whether they pay $4 to subsidize the recycling, because I don't recycle, I'm one of them, okay? And I just thought forcing the people that don't recycle to subsidize the whole thing was a bit unfair, and that was my opinion.
I understand.
So the new, so the new contract is going to stay as is, 832?
If you go with subscription...
As a subscriber.
Then it would, there would be no change for those.
Non-subscribers' pay nut.
Correct. Anything else?
I'd like to take a motion.
Yeah, I would like to make a motion that we allow recycling to be something that a person can opt into if they wish to do that, knowing that they're going to pay $8.32, but that it's optional to our residents, so that Charlie, myself, and most of the people apparently that called me to say, "I don't want to do that." They don't have to. That would be my motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, as stated by Councilman Robinson and seconded by Councilman Brown. Any discussion?
I think we discussed it.
I think we all agree. All agree? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, then motion carries. Thank you. Thank you for being here.
Thank you very much.
Item number seven, discussion regarding formation of a tourist advisory board. Discussion only.
So, Mayor and council, that was also an item requested by Councilman Robinson to have on the future agenda item discussion, so that is before you today to discuss the formation of a tourism advisory board. Let's take it away.
I guess I'll jump.
Sure.
You know, originally, the reason that this was brought forward, we had some folks come to council, and the people are paying attention to how we're promoting the city of Shenandoah, how well we are doing, are we doing enough? There's certainly some interest in the fact that we've accumulated over $6.1 million in reserves, that we don't really seem to have a plan to spend. And I brought forward the idea that perhaps we could take the same path that other cities do in the state of Texas, which is very common for them to have either a convention Visitors Bureau Board of Directors, that's one route, or another would be an advisory board that provides for transparency, it provides for oversight in the sense of planning, and we need to do some planning, apparently. It gives us a chance, then, to create an opportunity for our hotel owners and operators to have a voice in the use of that hotel motel tax. They, after all, are collecting it from their customers. It also gives our citizens a chance, if we create an advisory board that we invite some of our citizens to serve on, to also have input into how we are spending that money. And it would move us forward, I think, in a more professional, deliberate way. Just to give you an example, this is just a sampling of cities that do this, Orange, Grapevine, Irving, The Woodlands, Waco, Dennison, Nacogdoches, Beaumont, McKinney, Denton, Harlingen, Seguin, Arlington, Gonzales, San Marcos, Corsicana, Allen, Katy, Frisco, Laredo. These are just cities that all have either a Board of Directors or an advisory board. Most of them, I believe, call it an advisory board, which I think is inappropriate. It's usually created by either continuing resolution of a council or by ordinance, and both of those put it into place, it puts a structure in place that lives beyond the current council or a future council, once a future council decides to repeal it. Those are the tools that are being used by cities who collect a hotel motel tax. When you listen to some of the comments and you see what some of these other cities are doing, there's many things out there that we probably could be doing even more of. So that was the reason for bringing it forward. To me, I see no reason why we don't give a voice to our business community, the hotel business community, in participating in how we are going to use those monies that we're collecting, because frankly, that dollar that's collected from that customer is supposed to be used to the benefit of the hotel industry. And whatever we can do to drive more business into the city, to put more heads in beds, that's what we should be trying to do.
And I am going the total opposite direction. I've created, and I'm going to be socializing to the governor, Lieutenant Governor, state legislators, the Public Safety and Property Tax Relief Act, and tourism dollars should be for everyone, not just for the tourism business. Hotel occupancy tax revenue should be used to support public safety and provide relief to property taxpayers. Tourists benefit from safe communities, responsive emergency services, and well-maintained infrastructure. It's only fair that a portion of the revenue they generate helps to fund these essential services. Instead of squabbling over how to dole out even more money to the tourism cabal, let's focus on using hotel tax dollars to protect our neighborhoods, support our first responders, and give property taxpayers the relief they deserve. It's time we stop treating hot taxes and the revenue like a private trust fund for the travel industry and start using it to support the people who actually keep our communities safe. And I think this year especially, with what we're experiencing with the tax rate that we're probably going to have to come up with, that we're going to need all the help that we can get, and a lot of cities our same size are going to be in the same place. I will socialize the documentation to Bill and send it to all of you. If you would like to sign on to that, I'd appreciate it, but that's where I'd like to go with it. I'd like, I'd like to see the dollars being used to support us. There would be a carve-out for using for CVB purposes, but it wouldn't be what it is today, like 100% for tourism. So instead of fighting for scraps of it, I'd like us to have a bigger share of it because it is something that we need to have, and I don't think our property taxes should be going up when we have money that we're just throwing away on branding and marketing.
I don't see where, where the two, your suggestion for legislation and the advisory board would be in opposition to one another.
Well, if we, if we actually, if we actually are successful in the legislation, there won't be that much left for a CVB to actually push out into advertising. We'll be using the bulk of it for essential city services. So it might be premature. I'm not saying we'll never need a board, but if we're successful, I don't want to create a board just to find out, we're going to have a board that's going to oversee far, far less than what it is today.
Or it could be supportive towards the enforcement, to the passing of that legislation, which is, I think that...
Yeah, I think, I really appreciate, actually, what Councilman Raymaker has said about carving out monies for the public safety, because I think that we could make a good argument that the hotel industry actually would like that. They would like to have more police, more patrol around their properties and such. Also have to be realistic about it. Every time there's been a carve-out of any kind, there's been a tremendous battle with the tourism industry, and they always win. And the, just the fact that we were able to get a little bit of money carved out for cultural arts years ago was a big deal. And then for the preservation of historical property and such, that was a big deal. So you're not going to get the bulk of hotel tax. It's just not going to happen. You're going to get maybe some of it.
In the legislation...
But it will be a legislative act that allows that, nothing that we can do here.
Yeah, the legislation will not just be a carve-out for small cities. It is going to be for everybody. All cities, all sizes will be able to partake the same way. You can't tell me that Houston isn't dying for revenue after they've had to do big police pay increases. Harris County, the same thing. Just because we perhaps haven't needed it before doesn't mean that we shouldn't try to do it. So I'm not driving for just a small carve-out. I want to change it uniformly, and, excuse me, I will be going out with my torch and pitchfork to go after the cities, to get them to join in with us so that we can get a hold of this money.
Just echo on that, me and the city's Kima have been in conversations about this exact issue, so I will be having a meeting with her sooner than later.
I don't know of any legislator for a city in the state that I've ever talked to that was not in favor of doing what you're saying, Ron. 100% approve it, and hope that happens, but also looking at how people are, the wheels move so slow in government, that may take years to happen. I mean, the tourism industry has been fighting this forever. They've got a huge constituency of people fighting it at the state level. We even talked to some of our legislators that have had that pressure from the other side. I agree with you, I'd like for that to happen, but until then, I think that we need to manage as best we can what we have to make sure we're promoting the way that we really need to promote for this community. We, there, I disagree with you on one thing. We do need to advertise. That's one of the things I think we're very lax at. Advertising can do a significant amount of benefit to our citizens and to our businesses to promote this beautiful city. Most people don't know about it, and we need to be more aggressive than we've ever been before. I believe that the CVB should be more proactive, not just maintaining its current programs, but actively promoting our hotel inventory to maximize occupancy wherever there are big draws to our area, like events in The Woodlands and many other things. There's so many things that we need to do to promote us that we're not. And so I thoroughly back your proposal, Frank, to get an advisory board to help until we can change it, and I think we ought to actively work to change it so that we can use those dollars to help the police, to help our cities, because everyone needs it now with what the legislators, legislators are doing with taxes. But until then, I say we move forward with this idea.
I agree. I support, I support any legislation that would do just what you described, but in, and again, having tried already to get carve-outs for, for police and for the completion of David Memorial, because that serves a lot of our hotels here in Shenandoah, I saw how futile, futile it is to try to get something off the ground like that. Up until the time that it does come to fruition, I think, I think we should have some sort of, of control or some sort of a board to advise, and we can always disband the board. I mean, it's not going to be...
And I'm just, I'm just curious, because, John, we've already had record hotel attendance this year, correct?
It's down 20% right now.
Last two years have been all-time historic highs, and we've had five successive year over year increases coming out of COVID.
Okay. Now, I was just curious how much more we could go if we spent more money.
Well, I'm going to say this, because this is the only, this hotel industry is, is basically controlled by lobbyists in Austin.
Absolutely.
Period. And that's the obstacle that everyone talks about here and can't crack that nut.
And who in Austin do we need to bring our torches and pitchforks to?
Well, you can do that, and, and I just think it's an effort in futility, myself, but... Jim, there's, in the budget, I saw, I think, five things that John has increased... But Jim, there's, in the budget, I saw, I think, five things that John has increased in advertising on this budget we're about to talk about.
Thank goodness.
That's on there. Well, it's all, so we are spending more money if that's the way that it is, but just because the money is there, we've got really two things we can do. We can lobby and spend what we do or quit collecting the tax, okay? You know, it's really that simple. I mean, and I don't want to stop collecting the tax. I don't know, you know, I don't know. I'm not against an advisory board. I'm really not, but the feature of, and I've talked to Bob a couple of times over this. I just, myself, can't see the advantage or the benefit, how it's going to benefit us. But if council wants to, you know, create the board, I'm for it.
I think that at the very least, they could be in the interim until the legislation is enacted that would substitute any other effort or help us.
What say you, Bill, anything?
Let me just say, it appears that there is, may be a favorable vote for that. From my standpoint as the city attorney, I would prefer it to be by ordinance. And if that's okay, I will prepare an ordinance that you can vote on at the next meeting.
That was going to be my motion, actually. Thank you.
A second.
The motion would be to have staff bring forward that.
This is just discussion, we can bring it up at another council meeting for a vote.
Okay.
Right now, we're just discussing the idea of establishing an advisory board.
Yep, okay. Now, I'd like to add a question to follow up with Bill, and this is more for Councilman Robinson. You've been looking at other cities. Is there a city in particular where you saw an advisory committee and some of the way they're organized that really checked all the boxes that you're looking for? Just to give us any sort of guidance, staff.
The ones I read off tonight really checked those boxes.
They're very similar.
As I look through there, what are you doing? You know, what is the purpose of that? And that was my focus, is what was the purpose of the organization? What you call it is really more about just identification. You can call it whatever you want to, but advisory board seems to be the typical reference, and its role is to advise.
When this was brought up a couple of council meetings ago, I asked the city administrator to research this, and she has contacted TML. She has contacted other cities that have boards such as you described, and so there's an extensive amount of research. In fact, I think that there are also some, got some rules, isn't it?
Yes, I would prepare, my suggestion would be that we create the board by ordinance and then a set of bylaws.
Bylaws, correct.
That the board works through.
So research has been done into that, so it's, on the next council meeting, let's bring it up on the agenda for a vote, if we all agree on that.
Thank you.
All right. We're going to move on to item number eight. Discussion on possible action to adopt the park master plan. I just want to say something about the plan before we start discussing it. I just want to let the public know that we did hear what you had to say, and we did see where there were some errors committed on our part as far as the publication of this plan to the public. There were some, it wasn't really reviewed to the extent that it should have been. And that created a lot of confusion out there, such as the sidewalk thing. There's no plan, as far as I'm concerned, to put any sidewalks anywhere. But if that was left into that plan, that again causes confusion, and that'll be dealt with. But I assure you that that's not a plan that we have. Am I correct in that?
You're correct. It's a concept plan, just like a thoroughfare plan, just like zoning.
It's like a 10-year plan. But it's, the main point I want to make is that we heard you, and we reacted, and we adopted your suggestions and your recommendations and your objections, and as we prepared this final version of it. If there are some tweaks that we have to make on that, we'll make those tweaks, so to create less confusion. So having said that, let's...
Just really quickly, Mayor and Council, just as a point of fact, looking at the plan that was attached to the agenda packet online, so that, as you said, the two parks have been removed from that.
Yes.
The pathway that has been mentioned as a concern by the residents tonight, it is shown on there as a proposed pathway connecting the pool parking lot to the main park. So that is still on the plan, just as a point of fact.
That's what I thought, and that'll be removed.
If we have a motion to approve, and the person making the motion would like to, you can make the motion excluding the sidewalk between the park and the pool, and then the plan will be so amended.
I'd like to make a motion to table this because I don't see anything that's still relevant to the East Side Park. I mean, I can take a triangle and draw it around a pond, too, but I don't see anything that tells me any vision at all of what they're going to do with that park. And I'm also strongly opposed to the dog park between Sunnydale and Wellman Manor. So I think those things need to be corrected on the document before it comes back for approval.
So like Bill said, you could do it by motion.
And I just did with a table, so do I have a second?
You need a second to table.
All right. There's a motion to table the item by Councilman Raymaker. Is there a second? If there's no second, let's continue the discussion on the master plan.
If I may, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion then to adopt this plan with the elimination of any references to pathways, et cetera, that we have heard about tonight. I would ask Bill to perhaps help me with the structure of that motion, but we want to acknowledge, and I want to thank, these folks for coming forward. And they did a good job of speaking on this issue, and I'm grateful for that. But definitely, we need to keep the commitments we've made. So my motion is to adopt this plan with the removal of those items that were mentioned earlier.
A second to that, but I also want to make sure that we're not going to do another water fountain thing. We don't, not a water fountain, but...
Bear in mind, any proposed park or any proposed adjustment, we will have a meeting to involve the public in these decisions, okay? It's not going to be a town hall, it's going to be a item, identify the item that we're going to speak about.
And then have a public hearing.
And have a public hearing about it.
And I'd like, Frank, you to amend your motion and list those things specifically, so there's no room for interpretation, okay? I've got it as close as I can, so.
Yes, amend the motion to...
I've got a frog in my throat, too.
To specifically call out those items, please.
To exclude the pathway between the park and this pool.
Yes.
Or any other pathway that's listed there that it's not supposed to be there.
And the splash pad.
The splash pad and the, yeah, the dog park.
Take them all off.
The triangle these in reference to is a triangle, so we'll...
So why wouldn't we just have them redo the plan?
Don't want to spend all that money.
I think the consultant can take care of that on the House.
We can make the changes.
All right, so we have a motion, as long as it is. What is the motion? Secretary, do you have the motion, Bill?
As I have my notes, the motion is to approve the master plan, the park master plan, with the elimination of all pathways, in particular between the pool and the park, the elimination of a second splash pad, and the elimination of dog park.
The triangle.
Oh, the land trust that she's in reference to.
That's already excluded.
It's still in writing on the plan.
I think enough folks have a concern here that we shouldn't be doing anything with this right now.
And we can add in, and the parks that were on Cedarwood, that we've already, they've been eliminated, but to make sure.
They're all the land trust.
All the land trust.
Yeah, land trust.
I think we have a point of order here.
We don't need to. We can fix it.
Okay, so we got it?
Yes.
All right.
A second.
Oh, yeah, it was by Councilman Raymaker, a motion by Councilman Robinson, seconded by Councilman Pollard. Any additional discussion?
Just one more thing. I think it's important that everyone understand that the reason for having a plan, the last plan that we had was 17 years old, and because of its age, we were not able to go out to the state of Texas to the Parks and Wildlife that has millions of dollars sitting there every year for cities such as ours to be able to apply for grants. Those funds come into the city instead of coming out of our taxpayer, local taxpayer dollars, come into the city so that we can upgrade, we can replace equipment, we can maintain, and we haven't been able to take advantage of that because we don't have an updated plan. You have to have a plan that's at least no older than five years. So this will give us a new plan that we can then take and use and legitimately apply for grants.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
I'm going to go aye, so you don't have to vote, Mr. Ray.
Okay. So the motion passes, three to one. Item number nine, discussion on possible action to adopt the following ordinance. An ordinance of the city of Shenandoah, Texas amending section 54.4.1, parks and recreation hours of operation, providing for a penalty in the amount of $2,000 for violations thereof, provided for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Mayor and Council, again, this was discussed at a prior city council meeting and requested to come before council for discussion as an agenda item, and it is before you today. The origin of this item was the difference between the park's starting hours at 6:00 a.m., the beginning of the noise ordinance at 7:00 a.m., and then there's also park pavilion rentals, which can start two hours after the park opening and end two hours before the park closing. I know that Bill has prepared an ordinance, which is included in the agenda pack, and it specifies changing the opening hour from 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 a.m. and leaving the closing at 10:00 p.m.
Could we modify the closing till 9:30?
Modify the opening to eight?
You would need to make, if you make a motion.
I make a motion to modify the opening to eight o'clock and to closing at 9:00 p.m., 9:30.
I'll second that.
So are you making a motion to approve this?
Modifying the ordinance.
Approve with these modifications.
With these modifications?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry, you make a motion?
I did, yes.
And you seconded it? Is a motion to approve based on the modifications by Councilman Pollard, seconded by Councilman Raymaker. Any additional discussion on that?
Yeah, it has been discussed a lot, at least within my neighborhood, which is adjacent to the park, a lot. And that was the reason that I brought it up. So mostly people bring a beer, not the torch and pitchforks, but they do occasionally, you know, take a poke, right? So, and that's fine, that's how we learn, that's how we learn things on, you know, what people are preferring.
Any additional discussion? If no, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Related to this, just a question for staff with the new park hours of eight in the morning. Should we modify the first park pavilion rental to still have that two-hour buffer before the park starts? So that would move it to 10:00 a.m. is when the first, I mean, it's something we can just do on the city website.
What is the first window now?
Eight. So there's a two-hour buffer between the park opening, just in case somebody wanted to do some setup ahead of time. So I'm just asking if you want to maintain that two-hour buffer, because that's a quick change on the city website, honestly, if you'd like to see that.
How does the council feel about that?
It brings up a whole other conversation.
I'm kind of willing to see how it goes, like, okay, how many people start offending and show up at 7:30 or something? But I don't know if I push it back, you know how often the pavilion is used better than I do, so how frequently are people taking eight o'clock versus 10 o'clock?
Okay, we can look into it.
Yeah.
Not a problem. Just wanted to see if there's any opinion before we did that.
Won't you do the research, and we can make that adjustment at another council meeting?
We just don't want, do not want any activity before eight o'clock.
All right. Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to item...
Can I say one more thing? I don't think that we should have anybody getting arrested because they're walking their dog through the park. It's specific, it's specific activities like the pickleball, tennis, some of the athletic things that are noisier, basketball, that, you know, but we had the question earlier about the park and enforcing it when the park closed. There's no code enforcement coming at 10 o'clock at night, so is PD patrolling the park at 10 o'clock to flush everybody out of the park?
We don't specifically go at those times. I can't dictate that because calls and everything like that, especially right now. But if there's people that are there after hours, all they have to do is call the non-emergency line, and we can come over there and take care of it.
Because it seemed to be there was confusion, and I always thought that somebody was coming at 10 o'clock to sweep the park personally.
No, that's, I've been here for many years, and it's never...
With the park closing at 9:30, would you be able to have somebody come through between 10:00 and 10:30?
There's absolutely 100% no way to dictate day-to-day where officers are going to be at any given time. So you could, you know, say we can do one thing or another, but calls are going to dictate that.
Yeah, it's just a matter of, if there's a disturbance there, if somebody's creating a disturbance after 10 o'clock, all they got to do is call.
All they had to do is call.
Call the non-emergency number.
There's folks there, and we can come over there and run them off. But to dictate and to tell the guys to be there every night, we can't, we can't do that, because, you know, calls and everything like that, we have no working idea of what we're going to be doing at that time, whether we're working calls, DWIs, or arresting somebody or whatever.
I know that, but we do have to have a commitment to residents, and that's in a residential area.
Correct.
If there was a park next to somebody else's house, I think that they would like to know that somebody was enforcing the rules of the park.
It would be enforced as soon as they call us and we show up. If they call, we will show up and we will enforce that.
Well, okay. Yeah, this is not on the agenda.
Right. All right, item number 10. Discussion on possible action to approve additional funding and to award a contract for construction of additional parking at the main park.
Mayor and council, on August 18th, city staff received bids for this project, for the additional parking at the main park, and we had four bidders who submitted their bids. The lowest qualified bidder was ARS Construction, and their total cost with the cash allowance was $235,641. So a little background on this, the park currently has 27 parking spaces, and last year, city council requested as one of their capital project items, adding additional parking at the main park. So staff worked really quickly, plowed to get those numbers together in time for the budget workshop. We had a preliminary sketch that showed adding 12 additional spaces with angle parking, and funding was approved based on that cost estimate. Well, throughout the design process and working with Blile Engineering, they found a way to actually double our parking at the parking lot, which was the primary goal of the request, and to not have the angled parking, but 90-degree parking. So what Chris has pulled up here is the original proposed, and if you'll go to the next, this is where the final design of the park ended, which staff moved forward with this because, again, it provided many more parking spaces, which was the initial concern that council wanted staff to solve. Because of this, there's more concrete, and so there's more cost. The cost estimates were updated and the bids actually came in right, right on top of where those cost estimates were at. However, as you can see, the, what was, what was preliminarily together a year ago for the funding has changed. It's better, in my opinion, because we're getting more parking spaces, but there is more cost. So there is already funding in place for this, and this item is a two-part, because we need to fund an additional $105,000, and that will get us the funding we need to award this project fully funded to the contractor, ARS. One other point about this, this is an MDD-eligible project. The initial funding was approved by MDD. They meet next month, and Lisa jump in whenever you'd like to, but the idea here is that city council could fund the portion needed if they wanted to award the project and then go back to MDD to reimburse those dollars. Honestly, with the flow of the construction, we are going to need to wait until after the fall into the fund, which is in the middle of October. We don't want, you know, if it is approved, we don't want to tear up the park before that event, so we do have some time for MDD to meet and, and reimburse those funds. We just need to make sure the funds are available so we can award that project if council so decides. And that's the end of my update.
But let's revisit the history, or do we need a motion?
Let's, let's get a motion and discuss it.
Okay. When that came up, MDD took it on and we, you know, we just approved dollars in July for the MDD budget for this. Why didn't we know this when we went to budget for MDD?
This project was actually approved last fiscal year, or the fiscal year we're in currently. Yes, the parking lot improvements. So the project's funded within this year. The original, what was it, 150, uh, 157,000?
157,200.
Okay, all right, because I don't remember hearing about any additional funding done at workshop.
They were doing some rework on the original design to see what could yield for additional parking spaces. That came in after MDD had already approved their budget. So Joseph put out for bid with that idea and then wanted to see what the bids would come in, which they came in above, obviously, the 157,000 that was approved for this fiscal year in MDD that we're currently in, the 24, 25 fiscal year. So this would be basically just to fund the additional needed, because it adds more parking, and that was the huge push for this project was because of street parking, tried to avoid it, pull more parking into the park, I mean, into the actual parks facility. So the difference of the 103,000 and some, you know, $91, that's for those additional parking spaces that they had found in discovery of reworking.
Yeah, because of the history, yeah, was all the vehicles that were overflowing out on this, on cedar wood and maple wood.
And I think it increases this, because originally we approved the project for, it looks like, Joseph, I'm sorry, not as good as, I know the money part, but the actual logistic part's probably more you, it added 12, or there's 27 current spots.
And adds 26.
The original funding was to only add 12 additional spaces, that would give you a 39. So then it looks like how Blile Engineering had reworked the design, it would increase your total to 53. So that's a pretty significant amount of parking spaces. So this would just be to add into addition to that project, basically like an amendment to the original design, which obviously is going to yield, because it, like Joseph said, concrete, it's not going to be free to add spaces that way. So what this agenda will say, is saying is that we want to, you approve the bid as the council, which you would have to anyway, because MDD can only approve funding, they can't approve contract awarding. So you approve the con, but we can't approve the contract unless there's the funding secured. So what it's saying is that the, the city would just say, yes, we'll fund the differential to get the contract awarded, and then we will go back to MDD next month and, and ask them for the funding reimbursement. Like Joseph said, this project's not going to take off October 1. There's going to be some time lapse, so this is just to secure funding for the award, but it is MDD's, it is MDD's project, but because we only meet quarterly now, we couldn't bring it to you, it would have been on tonight's agenda if MDD was meeting, obviously, right?
Five times a year.
And then the city council wouldn't have to worry, they would only be approving the bid. And that's kind of how that works. I think, I think I explained it clearly, but please let me know.
All right, let's, let's get a motion on this.
Have a motion to approve.
A motion to approve of Councilman Pollard?
I'm about to, need to modify that to request MDD.
It's in, yeah, it's, oh, the, the motion, sorry, I thought it was the agenda.
Yeah.
You want to modify that too?
And you say just you want to ask MDD to reimburse for the 105,000?
And also ask MDD to reimburse.
Okay. Second.
Second bid by Councilman, I heard you first. By Councilman Brock. All right, any additional discussion?
Yeah, Lisa, this 105,000 is going into 24, 25 budget year, right?
Yes, so you're approving the funding right now, so it's not going to be on the budget document that's going to be published October 1.
So we don't have to worry about it?
No.
All right. If there's no additional discussion, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
So then we'll need to do the awarding item, the item B of this, which is awarding the project. Okay.
Discussion on possible action to elect a representative to the Montgomery County Emergency Communications District. I'm sorry?
Sorry, what I, what I was saying is in that agenda item, we need to award the project.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
We awarded the, we funded it, now it needs to be awarded.
Got it.
Make a motion to award it?
A motion to award the project to the, what is it for?
It's ARS Construction.
ARS Construction by Councilman Pollard. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilman Raymaker. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, discussion on possible action to elect representative to the Montgomery County Emergency Communication District Board of Managers. We have, let's see, I have it here. We've been asked to award for two nominees, Paul Vergadamo and Paul Sims. I need a.
I'll make a motion to award both.
Is it, is this, is this one, to pick one?
Yes.
One of the two?
I, I'll make a motion to pick Paul.
Paul Vergadamo?
He's great.
I'll second that.
A motion to select Mr. Paul Vergadamo by Councilman Pollard, seconded by Councilman Robinson. All in favor say aye? All in discussion? No discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, if I might suggest a 10-minute break before we get into the detail of the budget?
All right, yes, let's take, let's take a 10-minute break. All right, yes. Let's take a 10-minute break.
To go?
I'm going to reconvene at council meeting. Before we move on to the next item, I'm going to revisit item number 10. It just so happens that we have the designer of that parking that we just discussed in item 10. And Mr. Blile, would you come up to the podium, please? Why don't you tell us a little bit about the designer of this?
Okay, well, you all know Danielle Mueller. And she's the one that found the extra parking spots for you guys, doubled the spaces. She was the project manager. She's worked on a lot of your projects, done a great job for you, done a great job for us. She's decided that she's going to go home and raise her kids. And so her last day with us is Friday. And we're going to miss her. I know your staff's going to miss her. But you'll be around, bringing kids up to council meeting or something, okay? She has two little ones, and as we all know, being a full-time mom is a pretty important job. So hate to see her go, but it's going to be good for her and the kids, so that's great. Ryan Robinson. Danielle, you're A&amp;M Kingsville?
A&amp;M Kingsville.
Ryan's one of our LSU guys.
Go Tigers!
Yeah, I had to say that. But Ryan's going to be filling in and doing a lot of... He's already done some projects for you all, but he'll be stepping in and taking Danielle's place. And so you'll see him at council meetings more often. But he's a good one. We're losing a good one. We've got a good one coming in, so.
Yes. I just want to say that when we took on the Tamina Sewer and Water project, we didn't know who was going to work it, but when we found out that you were doing it, and up until now, you have done such a tremendous job handling that project for us, bringing the Tamina community and the Shenandoah community together the way it has. It probably hasn't ever been done before. And I think your liaison with the Tamina community and Shenandoah has been instrumental in getting this project to fruition. And I personally want to thank you for that.
Amen.
That's well said, Mayor. Thanks for saying that. One more time.
She'll be back.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to item number 13. Discussion of possible action regarding the 2025 property tax rate.
12.
Item 12.
12. Okay. I pre-checked it. That's what happened. Discussion regarding the proposed 2025-2026 budget. Discussion.
Mayor and council, last meeting on the 13th of August was our budget workshop. I think we were out in record time, but most likely because we had to rework some of the items that needed to be presented at that time. But for this agenda, I do have five general things to go through. And then I do have two presentations at the end. I promise they will be quick. So the first part will be general questions. Is there any general questions pertaining to the budget, the capital projects, that have come up since our budget workshop that need answering? Or any information?
Well, the whole budget, really. I mean...
Yeah.
It started off last meeting, and I listened to it, and you said that we were $700,000 in the whole then. You know what I mean?
No, so...
That you had...
No, $700,000 was what I needed for property tax to balance the proposed budget. Obviously, things have changed, right? That's why there's $700,000 in that revenue for $700,000. When we proposed the budget, we don't have any tax information. Those don't come in until later. So we have to kind of put a placeholder and then see what our tax rates come in at. And that's what that comment was made for, I believe.
So...
So we're not $700,000 in the whole?
No.
That's what you're saying.
That was just the property tax level, the revenue that you would need to net into the general fund from your property tax rate.
Well, I don't know how you can say that if we don't know what the tax rate is or how much we're going to bring in with that. I truly don't. And just to say that we're fine, you know, because I don't see it that way.
Yeah, I don't see anything where, you know, let's talk about what we need to have to cover some of the costs, like say for PD. I don't know all those numbers. I don't think all council knows all those.
Yes, I have a presentation tonight because we had to rework some of the numbers. The problem is that how the tax code is written, it's a mad dash. That's what it is. By the time you get all your values and you have to get all the public notice posted and everything like that, it's pretty much a mad dash. So we did not get our values until, I believe it was July 28th or 29th this year. So the proposed budget was proposed in mid-June. So last year, we yielded $622,000 worth of, you know, sales tax revenue, based on the tax rate calculation. So there is a buffer. If you looked at the end of the surplus, there was a $56,000 difference as a proposed surplus to the operational budget. So the $700,000 was based on my estimations of values going up plus our current rate at 14.21. So, which tonight I'll show you, I was pretty accurate in that calculation.
Maybe it would be helpful if we did your presentations first, and then we would have a better feel for...
Well, yeah, we could have more questions. I just want to make sure there wasn't any general questions like pertaining to, hey, what's this line item? But that's really what general questions is for more, like...
You might just quickly say which capital projects that we're going to fund and how we're going to fund them.
Yes. So I have no updates from budget workshop. There is one that I discussed during the budget workshop that because Chris was out on vacation. There was one project that had come in after we had proposed the capital project books. Our virtual servers need to be replaced. And correct me if I'm wrong, Chris, but I believe there's three?
Yeah, three.
So the total cost for those three virtual servers would be $42,000. That's divided over all four funds because that's a general IT purchase.
Are those cloud servers or physical servers?
No, it's our physical servers here.
Okay. Is there a reason why they're not cloud servers?
It's our local servers for virtualization. There's no cloud involved with that.
Okay. Just asking.
You're going to put it across all funds?
Yes, so it'd be about $10,500 for each fund.
So that'd be general fund, CBB, water and sewer, and?
MDD.
And what?
It's part of their general transfers, MDD.
MDD?
Mm-hmm. So that was the only update for capital projects that I had that were not discussed. But to go down the list real quick on capital projects. For general fund, there were only two that MDD had not picked up. Was the HVAC replacement, which we've been discussing since, you know, April, because we prefunded the chillers.
Yeah, that wasn't eligible for MDD, though.
No. So that means Joseph had based off a square footage percentage breakout. So basically, how it works out is that CBB is about 12% of the total footprint of the City Hall. Water and sewer is about 11%, and general fund would pick up the remaining. So, and I'll have all those breakouts for the next... It's approximately, I think, $404,000 for CBB, approximately $360,000 for sewer, and about $2.5 million for general fund. And that's also with the chiller. So the chiller will be broken out as well, that cost.
But the chiller we're using available cash, you said, right?
Yes, that's how capital projects are typically funded, is all available cash. You don't net them against your operating budget because they're not recurring expenses.
So this last in the packet, the dollar amount for available cash, you've already encumbered that for the...
So those breakout sheets are totally just operational. Those are revenues versus expenses for operational. The projects will be presented in their own account, and it's a cash funded. There's no way to really show that in the budget because it's cash and it's not based on a revenue. Does that make sense?
I know, I personally hope it's...
Huh?
Other than when you've put in before, transfer of available cash into the general fund. You did that two years that I saw.
I don't recall. What we do typically make a notation on the surplus at the Department 17 that will transfer those funds into Department 400. But there's no way to show that as a revenue source on the general fund side to offset it. Does that make sense? Like the cash component?
Well, it sure makes the budget hard, Lisa, to try to...
Yeah, well, it's available cash. You just show the transfer record because you're transferring it to a fund. So it's intergovernmental transfer. That's all that is. Yeah. That's how that's presented.
So going over your sheets, I don't know that the audience can see them at all.
They're in the packet, Chris, after item number 13.
Like page 24? Well, the PDF page 24.
They're going to be very hard to see on the screen.
Huh?
They're going to be very hard to see on the screen. Their tables.
Yeah. That's pretty good. All right, so Lisa, did you want to walk through any of these?
So these were all discussed in open meeting already. So the removal of the Human Resource Service, that was just left in by accident. We removed that out. There was an increase to the Conro Chamber of Commerce memberships. We increased that, obviously. We did remove the North Houston Association. There was some discussion during the first budget discussion, and then we confirmed that at the workshop. The group insurance and dental insurance increases, I put a placeholder in there because we know that rates will most likely go up. It's the cost of business. So I usually do a five and a six and a five. We were very lucky. Our group insurance only went up like less than 1%. So I add that money back into the budget because it's not needed anymore. Same for dental insurance. I budgeted 5% and it came in at 3% over our current rates. So those added money back into your budget. Then there was license and user fees for guardian licensing. We reduced those. And then certified letter and postage is once again going up. It's every year the postage. So the police department does have to send a lot of stuff certified because of certain testing, you know, stuff like that, to the state. Yeah, so that we increased just $100, just to encompass what we think that the increase would be. And then every year in the police train travel budget, we used to have to rent Thunder Range. That used to be off of 1314. I don't believe it's there anymore. And we use Leos funds to fund that. So what we would do is we would put it in the budget, but then Leos would pay back the general fund, whatever they brought in that year. Typically, Leos funds bring in about $2,500 a year. So about $2,500. So what we would do is offset it, but we would have to have the expense recorded, right? So we put it in the budget. Conro allows us to use the range at no cost. So that was just one of those things that just had not been removed, so I removed it out.
Okay.
So those are the only changes. There's not anything crazy. It's just really true-ups, you know, a lot of true-ups. So that added money back into your proposed budget. Or unallocated revenue funds to your proposed budget.
Anybody have any other questions, or should we get into the presentations?
There were just some to CBB, but we talked about these. Nothing has changed from the budget workshop. These were all presented at the budget workshop. These were advertising increases in some subscription and some public relations things that John had brought to us because he finally got vendor confirmation at that point. And then Water and Sewer hasn't had anything change, really. All right, well, if there's any other questions... So for capital projects, there's two, obviously, from the general fund that I just said, the HVAC and then the city hall entrance landscaping. At the budget workshop, it was recommended just to have landscaping, put a $50,000 limit in there. And then, it doesn't mean we'll spend all $50,000. It just gives Joseph an idea of what could be funded. And obviously, anything that's going to be drastic will be brought back to council for approval. So that and then the HVAC, which there's a contribution share, like we said, over the three other funds.
And for the landscaping, I'd kind of like to see how the numbers all come out before we commit to that.
So those will be funded out of reserve, like cash. It won't be out of your operating budget, if that makes sense. So it will affect your operating because it's not technically recurrent items.
You're going to send us something that's going to show the available cash then for the general fund after all?
I can get that worked. We just finished out the month. We had some issues with INCODE to get the month finalized out. But I do have, I believe I have up to July at this point, I can get those numbers. But if not, I can present that all tomorrow in an email for you to show you how it all works out. On the Water and Sewer side, there were four projects. The Vision Park 16-inch water line replacement, that's the main line that comes off of the tower. The fire hydrant repairs, the conversion to AMI. And then the treatment plant outfall line replacement. And was there any other questions about those projects?
No, that matches with the revenue side.
Yeah, Water and Sewer can cover it.
Yeah, so how the rates are structured for Water and Sewer is that every... You know, when we did the rate study in 2020, the idea was that you would cover your operational, but you would also cover your capital projects. So what they did to create our rates is they took all that into consideration. So that's why you yield over revenue every year to use towards your projects. So you technically fund them out of cash, if that makes sense.
I guess Danielle won't be doing the water and sewer rate study for us.
Oh, we've been working on it.
And she's already done it.
Yeah, we're working on it.
Okay, close to done, okay.
Yeah. So those are the projects from Water and Sewer. If there's any questions, feel free to call Joseph, Roll, me. We'll get you answers, you know. We're always here. But I'll also show you how that works with the overall Water and Sewer cash flow as well. Is there any other capital project questions?
Well, just, like you said, it's spread across... I only see one transfer from Water and Sewer for $3,670, which is the projects, and nothing from general operating, nothing from municipal development district, and nothing from CBB.
I don't believe that's...
Well, I haven't seen that from anybody.
So there is no transfer to capital projects in the Water and Sewer fund right now. That number's empty because we don't know what projects are funded.
You just listed them.
Yeah, but that's what I'm saying. They're not in the actual proposed budget. Is that what you're saying?
No.
Okay. Okay. So I want to make sure I'm answering your question right. So what was the number that you noted?
$3,670,000 of projects in Water and Sewer.
Is that right?
I mean, that's not what's proposed this year.
No.
I'm wondering if there's carryover from other funded projects.
Well, there's conversion to advanced metering, AI for $1,500,000, just?
Yes.
Okay, Vision Park Water, $550,000?
That's correct.
Fire Hydronautic, $70,000?
Yes.
Conversion to advanced metering, oh, I got it twice there.
Okay.
I don't know why, but then the outfall line replacement for $50,000.
That's correct.
So those have not been approved. So like when you look at the proposed budget, the transfer to capital projects under Fund 600 is blank. There's been no transfers obligated. Yeah. Okay, I just want to make sure we're clear on that one. Okay, so...
What do you mean, they're not approved, okay?
They haven't been officially approved, so they don't get added into the proposed budget until they're approved. That's why I was just making sure that you weren't thinking that they were already in the cap...
Well, you got to allocate the funds to do it.
Yes, that's what I'm saying. You said it was already in the budget, and I said, no, they weren't in the physical budget yet. Like in the actual budget document. That's why I was trying to make sure that we weren't confused on that one.
Well, I'm just confused with the money that we got and what the...
The transfer is to capital projects. So there's an expense in Department seventeen that will transfer those funds into Department four hundred, but there's no way to show that like as a revenue source on the general fund side to offset it. Does that make sense? Like the cash component?
Well, it sure makes the budget hard, Lisa, to try to.
Yeah, well, it's, it's available cash. You just show the transfer, transfer record because you're transferring it to a fund. So it's intergovernmental transfer. That's all that is. Yeah. That's, that's how that's presented.
So going over your sheets, I don't know that the audience can see them at all.
They're in the packet, Chris, after agenda number thirteen.
Like page twenty-four? Well, the PDF page twenty-four.
Hard to see on the screen.
Huh?
They're gonna be very hard to see on the screen. Their tables.
Yeah. It's pretty good. Alright, so Lisa, did you want to walk through any of these or?
So these were all discussed in open meeting already. So the removal of the Human Resource Service, that was just a left in by accident. We removed that out. There was an increase to the Conroe Chamber of Commerce memberships. We increased that, obviously. We did remove the North Houston Association. There was some discussion during the first, the first budget discussion and then we confirmed that at the workshop. The group insurance and dental insurance decre- or increases, I put a placeholder in there because we know that rates will most likely go up. It's just, it's the cost of business. So I usually do a five and a six and a five. We were very lucky. Our group insurance only went up like less than one percent. So I add that money back into the budget because it's not needed anymore. Same for dental insurance. I budgeted five percent and it came in at three percent over our current rates. So those added money back into your budget. Then there was license and user fees for guardian licensing. We reduced those. And then certified letter and postage is once again going up. It's every year the postage. So the police department does have to send a lot of stuff certified because of certain testing, you know, stuff like that to the state. Yeah, so that we increased just a hundred dollars just to encompass what we think that the increase would be. And then every year in the police train travel budget, we used to have to rent Thunder Range. That used to be off of thirteen fourteen. I don't believe it's there anymore. And we use Leos funds to fund that. So what we would do is we would put it in the budget, but then Leos would pay back the general fund, whatever they brought in that year. Typically, Leos funds bring in about twenty-five hundred a year. So about twenty-five hundred. So what we would do is offset it, but we would have to have the expense recorded, right? So we put it in the budget. Conroe allows us to use the range at no cost. So that was just one of those things that just had not been removed, so I removed it out.
Okay.
So those are the only changes. There's not anything crazy. It's just really true ups, you know, a lot of true ups. So that's, that added money back into your proposed budget. Or unallocated revenue funds to your proposed budget.
Anybody have any other questions or should we get into the presentations?
Oh, and there were just some to CBB, but we talked about these. These were, nothing has changed from the budget workshop. These were all presented at the budget workshop. These were advertising increases that in some subscription and some public relations things that John had brought to us because he finally gotten vendor confirmation at that point. And then water sewer hasn't had anything changed really. Alright, well, if there's any other questions, so for capital projects, there's two, obviously from the general fund that I just said, the HVAC and then the city hall entrance landscaping. At the budget workshop, it was recommended just to have landscaping, put a fifty thousand dollar limit in there. And then it doesn't mean we'll spend all fifty thousand. It just gives Joseph an idea of what could be funded. And obviously, anything that's going to be drastic will be brought back to council for approval. So that, that's a, that and then the HVAC, which there's a contribution share, like we said, over the three other funds.
For the landscaping, I'd kind of like to see how the numbers all come out before we commit to that.
So those will be funded out of reserve, like cash. We, it won't be out of your operating budget, if that makes sense. So it will affect your operating because it's not technically recurrent item.
You're gonna send us something that's gonna show the available cash then for general fund after all that?
I can get that worked. We just finished out the month. We had some issues with INCODE to get the month finalized out. But I do have, I believe I have up to July at this point. I can get those numbers. But if not, I can present that all tomorrow in email for you.
Okay.
To show you how it all works out. On the water sewer side, there were four projects. The Vision Park sixteen inch water line replacement, that's the main line that comes off of the tower. The fire hydrant repairs, the conversion to AMI, and then the treatment plant outfall line replacement. And if, was there any other questions about those projects?
No, that matches with the, with the revenue side.
Yeah, water and sewer can cover it.
Yeah, so how the rates are structured for water sewer is that every, you know, when we did the rate study in twenty twenty, the idea was that you would cover your operational, but you would also cover your capital projects. So, and so what they did to create our rates is they took all that into, into consideration. So that's why you yield over revenue every year to use towards your projects. So you technically could fund them out of cash, if that makes sense.
I guess Danielle won't be doing the, the water and sewer rate study for us.
Oh, we've been working on it.
She's already done it.
Yeah, we're working on it.
Okay, close to done, okay.
Yeah, so those are the projects from water sewer. If there's any questions, feel free to call Joseph, Rawl, me. We'll get you answers, you know, we're always here. But I'll also show you how that works with the overall water sewer cash flow as well. Is there any other capital project questions?
Well, just the, like you said, it's spread across. I only see one transfer from water and sewer for thirty-six seventy, which is the projects and nothing from general operating, nothing from municipal development district and nothing from CBB.
I don't believe that's.
Well, I haven't seen that from anybody.
So there is no transfer to capital projects in the water sewer fund right now. That number's empty because we don't know what projects are funded.
You just, you dislisted them.
Yeah, but that's what I'm saying. They're not in the actual proposed budget. Is that what you're saying?
No.
Okay. Okay, so I want to make sure I'm answering your question right. So what was the number that you noted?
Three million, six hundred and seventy thousand dollars of projects in water and sewer.
Is that right?
I mean, that's not what's proposed this year.
No.
I'm wondering if there's carryover from other funded projects.
Conversion to advanced metering, AI for one million, five hundred thousand, just?
Yes.
Okay, Vision Park Water, five, five hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
That's correct.
Fire hydrant audit, seventy thousand dollars?
Yes.
Conversion to advanced metering, oh, I got it twice there.
Okay.
I don't know why, but then the outfall line replacement for fifty thousand.
That's correct.
So those have not been approved. So like when you look at the, the proposed budget, the transfer to capital projects under Fund six hundred is blank. There's been no transfers obligated. Yeah. Okay, I have to make sure we're clear on that one. Okay, so.
What do you mean they're not approved? Okay.
They haven't been officially approved, so they don't get added into the proposed budget until they're approved. That's why I was just making sure that you weren't thinking that they were already in the cap.
Well, you gotta allocate the funds to do it.
Yes, that's what I'm saying. You said it was already in the budget and I said, no, they weren't in the physical budget yet. Like in the actual budget document. That's why I was trying to make sure that we weren't confused on that one.
Well, I'm just confused with the money that we got and what the police department is gonna need to do whatever.
We're gonna get, yes, we'll go through that, yeah.
You're gonna have to prove it to me because I can't see it.
Yeah. So is there any other questions about capital projects before we move forward or no? Okay, so Chris, if you could pull up the presentation that's about pay parity. And I will put these on the transparent, the budget page so that if anyone wants to look at them afterwards. There's a lot of numbers, so sometimes it gets a little hard to read, but we will put all these online as well. So for several months now, there's been a lot of, you know, discussion about pay parity in police departments nationwide. We have been anticipating and waiting for other agencies to see what they were doing. Our biggest one obviously was Montgomery County, correct? They are the biggest agency that's nearest to us and they have a lot more positions and advancement opportunities. So they finally released their study the day before our budget workshop at three P M in their budget workshop. It was different from what we were told by the budget manager and from some other communication with their department. So what Troy went back, looked at their pay schedules and then tried to match and then also offer a little bit more of incentive. Because being a smaller agency, we can't compete with everything that the county can offer for recruits and, you know, current officers, correct? So on this agenda tonight, we'll talk about the pay parity issue, other competitive needs, growth plans and budgetary impact. So we'll start off with the pay parity. And I apologize, but my screen is not working, so let me pull it up here. So I can, I can read it too. Yeah, it keeps going in and out. So what is pay parity? What is the police pay parity issue that we're occurring, that's occurring? So there is a nationwide police shortage that's causing a bidding war among agencies for talented officers and for recruit, like for cadets. So as we've seen, Houston PD, Harris County, DPS and Montgomery County have all been raising their pays to combat these department shortages. So how's that impact Shenandoah? Our current pay scale structure and our cert pay structure are no longer competitive. We used to have some competitive advantage over the county. We no longer do. This, the concerns of not addressing the pay parity is retention, obviously. We've had four officers already leave for pay opportunities. So four patrol vacancies, that's one less almost every shift. That causes a lot of, it causes a lot of, I'm sorry, trying to make sure I cover everything.
So it, it creates an issue for us because when we're down officers on the shift, of course, you're not able to respond to your, your calls. And when you're responding to your calls, you're not able to, to do your routine patrols and everything like that. So having, having a short shift is, is, you know, it puts a burden on the citizens.
And with, with losing officers, obviously you're not gonna recruit very well. And what it, or if you're gonna recruit, you're gonna recruit others that have been passive by other agencies for probably several reasons.
Can you just tell me then, under the impact then, what is our current number of fully funded police officers that are funded?
For patrol or for total police? Total twenty-eight. Correct?
Yes.
And then one admin assistance in their budget, Cara.
So you're currently short four people.
Mm-hmm.
Because I requested that be in the monthly report and it's not. Okay, carry on.
For, and for an agency of twenty-eight, four is a pretty impactful number. Four is not, may not mean much for the county, but it is a lot for Shenandoah.
And those positions that are missing, are they a patrol officer?
Yes.
It's all on patrol, yes.
Does that include any other resignations that are coming forward?
Not currently, but.
So we, we would be down one, one lieutenant?
Unless we can talk him into staying.
We tried.
Tried.
We've all tried.
So with the retention issue, you didn't have issues with recruitment. The main impact, what Troy says, is your service levels will be compromised, call time, stuff like that. And then the most important, I think, is officer burnout. These guys are working shift coverage. They're working a lot of overtime. It's, it's daunting work. And not having those extra officers, it's gonna cause burnout and that's what you don't want in police departments. So that's the biggest impact to Shenandoah PD for the pay parity. So why does this matter? So our location is twenty miles outside the large, the fourth largest city in the country. We handle Harris County crime. We're a huge hotbed. We're rate, we straddle forty-five. We have a huge commercial district and we have residential district. So essentially, us in Oak Ridge North are really your first lines of defense when you come over the county line, correct? So we intercept a lot of the crime as it's coming through. And then why, there's other aspects to this. So we need to worry about residential visitor safety. Not only our residents, but think about everyone who visits us. Commercial crime prevention and response. Our, we rely a lot on our commercial districts for sales tax revenue, property tax revenue, water revenue. If you have crime rampant, shops, they can leave and that hurts your tax base. That makes property taxes go up at the end of the day. And residential water rates can also be compromised by that. And then because we are on the highway and everyone knows, it's like the wild, wild west out there, accidents, you know. So they respond to a lot of those calls as well. That's an obligation, so.
Can I interject one thing? So our, our licensed plate cameras that are on the service roads indicate that we average about a hundred and fifty thousand reads per day. So that's what we're getting on our service road. So that's what's entering into our city per day. That's a lot for our small, little city.
And I really wanted to emphasize, you know, we're a mixed use community. We have a lot of residential, I mean, not a lot of residential. We have a significant residential, but we have a lot of commercial as well. So we're not just worried about one aspect. This is a larger aspect you need to be worried about when you're on the police side. So moving on, other considerations. So like, just how Shenandoah, it's a smaller city. So obviously, you're not gonna have all the advancement opportunities that the county has, like different task force, advancement opportunities, you know, promotional opportunities. And when we did a study a couple of months ago, our retirement, our benefits are, we're pretty much matching everyone. There's no competitive advantage really with any of that. We're actually low on cert pay, which we'll talk about tonight. So how do we combat that? Pay is one of our, it's, it's, it's the biggest thing we can do to combat with these other agencies and to keep our guys and girls. And then we'll just, so that's pretty much why pay parity is important. And I really want to emphasize just why it's important because it's, it, you know, everyone's moving and we have to keep up with it, with the pay. Are there any questions about any of the things that were just noted?
So even with parity, we can maybe hope to keep our first through four-year people before they want to leave because of advancement opportunity.
Exactly. And it's easier to recruit other talented, you know, officers from other agencies as well. Or new people to the area, new cops to the area. So that is why.
Do other, other agencies have signing bonuses to get people to go?
There, there is, but, but not locally. And there's a lot of discussions with that and I've spoken with many chiefs about it. And the problem with doing stuff like that is, is it affects with your, your retention, right? It's good for recruiting. However, the people that you have that are already here, well, they don't benefit from that. So.
It causes disparagement almost.
Yeah, you're, you're causing a disparagement between the, the, the officers that are already here and you want to keep those guys.
Our local competing agencies are not offering.
They're, they're not offering that, no.
Or what else are they having that we don't have? What can we do if not that?
So their certification pays are higher. They offer incentive pays for different job positions. You know, the take-home rides, everything like that, you know. We're trying to do our best to, to, to match with some of that. Some of the things we just, we can't do, like the lateral movement, the, the advancement positions. We're just, we're smaller, so we don't, we don't have those opportunities. But, you know, we try to, to do the best we can with some of the incentives we do offer. In the past, what brought people here was pay. I, I can tell you, there's, there's quite a few people here that, that came here because of pay. We used to get seventy or, you know, applicants at, at one time for just a few positions.
That wasn't too long ago.
That wasn't that long ago. It's because we were one of the highest paying around. And, and people make that, that assumption that we still are. And then the one where they find out, you know, they're disappointed because that's, that's something we were done.
Nobody wants to raise taxes, but on the other hand, public safety is the number one thing that, that we're in charge of here. And I hope that what you're gonna propose is enough to not only recruit people, but keep who we've got. And I know that you're not in favor of giving take-home rides to new people for a year. But I suggest that you look, if, if not that, then some kind of bonus for people to come here. Because we've got to, we've got to, we've got to bring them in and we need to figure out a way, I think, to be above all these other places. Even if we stepped up those raises, we're a year ahead of whatever the other communities have, we should be number one.
I, I, I think, I think what we've proposed, I think is, is really good and, and I think that, that it's doable. And I think Lisa's, you know, come up with a, with a good presentation on that. So I'll, I'll let her keep going with that presentation and she'll, she'll show you those numbers and I, I think, I think it's good, very competitive.
Thank you to see you.
So moving forward, so what really started all the pay parity discussion amongst our local area was Houston PD. Houston PD was like, I believe, three hundred officers short. They needed to find a way to incentivize. So I know the numbers are a little small. I apologize. I just wanted to, because I want, these will be posted online, so everyone can see them. So what I did here is I took our current, this is patrol scale only. I took our current, I took HPD's current and then their plan. So they have built out a five-year tier scale. And they have raised their, you know, obviously, four-year twenty-twenty-six and then it all lines up going forward. They do also, it was a little hard to show it, but there are certain steps that will group. So like three and four group, seven and eight, step and nine group, ten, eleven group, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen group. So our current scale is based on a fifteen-year scale. They go up to seventeen plus. So what they do is basically you'll be, so from like steps three and four, you will be on the same step. But what it does is every year the, the scale reamortizes, right? So then you move up to the new scale. That's how that works. That's how Montgomery County is based theirs as well. So as you can see, I put each, ours and then HPD, and then underneath each one, there you'll see a, a number in red, a percentage. That's how much under percent we are on their scale, the differential is. So like currently, we're already starting below HPD. They're starting one cadet or is, for step one is sixty-six thousand, we're at sixty-two thousand. Next, starting October one, they will go up to seventy-eight thousand. It's a pretty big jump. That would put us from about six and a half percent below them to about twenty-six and a half percent. So, and you can see is it just, it just, it builds up. So with the new scales, obviously they'll build up. Same thing with sergeants. I, I do apologize. I wish I had the screen working. It would be a lot easier to read. Sergeants are the same way. Their scale structure was a little bit different. They start at year five because of progression scale. We started, well, not year five, step five. We, we have a step one. So I did the same comparison. We're below, obviously. The, the lieutenant scale, also the same situation with Harris, I mean, HPD. Harris County has not officially had their scale, but they are matching. There was a motion made, I believe, at the end of July, it's three to two vote, that they were gonna match HPD. So they're trying to figure out their funding for that. So we know that HPD and Harris County are on the same scale right now. They're gonna be going on the same scale. So the more direct con, one that I do want to, you know, Harris County is Harris County, HPD is HPD. Montgomery County is our direct, you know, it's in the same county. They're close. As you'll see, we are competitive with them right now currently. The scale that we have, we do pay a little bit more. Our step one patrol starts off at sixty-two. They start at sixty. But their scale puts step one up to about seventy-one thousand next October one. Then it compounds. So then we'll be fourteen percent below their starting. That's gonna create a large parity, pay parity in our area. So these numbers, it's what it is. The only thing Montgomery County did that was different than Harris County and HPD is that they do a four-year scale, a four-year tier. So there's phases out at four-year twenty-twenty-nine. At that point, their committee will meet again. They'll look at their scales. The hope, I think, every agency has is that more people enter into law enforcement. With the increased pays, it's very attract, it's to attract new talent and maybe bring other officers back into the field that have left for maybe jobs in oil and gas or something like that. So that's why he's, a lot of agencies are only doing these four-year scales and then they want to revisit that time to hope that everything is kind of caught back up and this is the new norm. So it's a little ambiguous, but like Montgomery County, I listened to their budget workshop, they will bring it back every year. So if there's any adjustments that need to be made, if there's any revenue situations, they're gonna bring it. So even if we approve a scale idea, it's only the year that's funded is set in stone. Does that make sense? Everything else will be reviewed every budget workshop and we can make tweaks as we need. I don't want you to just think that you're committing exactly to this. This is not that. This is just to show you, this is what we're projecting out. Before, because budget man, officers, we need to know these things, especially these big jumps, right? So that you can start looking out forward. So patrol was, you know, lieutenant, oh, I'm sorry. I was thinking my laptop should be moving, but it's not. I'm, I'm sorry. So the next one, sergeant scale, you can see that it's the, kind of the same pattern. We're pretty competitive now, but starting October one, we will not be. Same thing for the lieutenant scale. So, which we were really competitive. We were sixteen percent higher than the way they were. So, but you, you could just see how this pay parity has caused kind of a little bit of a chaos with the pay scales.
However, their certification pay was higher than ours. So being that their certification was higher, the certification pay was higher than ours, that put their total pay higher than ours. So even though, these are base pays. So you have to add all your certification pays and your education pays and everything collectively to, to, to figure out exactly where you're gonna be. So, you know, our base pay was, was, was two thousand dollars higher. However, like I said, their certification pay was significantly higher than ours, which put us at a disadvantage, so.
So any questions about the Montgomery County scales or Harris County or HPD? Okay.
You know what we're looking for.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, me and Troy had a little bit of our attack when we saw Montgomery County's come through. Because Montgomery County originally said that they were gonna match ninety percent of Harris County HPD, but they actually overshot them. So, so this is our proposal. So patrol scale, it's a four-year scale just to match the counties. We did block grouping of steps and you can see, kind of try to put the green boxes around the steps that group together. The only difference, we tried to match the Montgomery County scales pretty closely. The only change is that we thought that year one is when you need to try to recruit people in, right? So what Chief Donlap did was is that he increased it a little bit higher than what Montgomery County was proposing for just year one. And then it balances out the rest of the four years pretty much. So the county was, I believe, apologize. The county's year one for patrol was gonna go up to seventy, just a little shy of seventy-one thousand. We proposed seventy-five thousand. That's closer to what Harris County and HPD are proposing. Uh, that's closer to what Harris County and HPD are proposing. Um, so you get a little bit of competitive edge on both. Um, and you try to recruit early so that you retain, because if I can make more starting off now and then I just bellow out, I mean, you, you, um, even out against everyone else's scales, there's no, you know what I'm saying? You get a little bit more bump year one on the scale, on the tier. So that's the only difference really between Montgomery County's and ours. Also, our top outs are a little bit higher. Um, but it's just because of how the progression of the scale has to work. Um, same thing for sergeant scale. We went a little bit above, um, Montgomery County starting pay. So our step one would be seventy-eight, five, four, two. There's, um. That's our current, sorry. Our current, one oh one, five, theirs is at one hundred, one hundred thousand, pretty much. So it's a thousand dollars more. Um, so mo- the, we have to retain, so sergeant lieutenant scales are more about retaining, right? And also keeping talent that one to promote eventually. Patrol is to recruit, to get someone in, because typically, um, in police agencies, you promote from within. Um, it's a good culture to follow, you know, and it helps out with morale and also, um, leadership. So, um, that's why there's a little bit more bump on the patrol side. But the, the scales are built so that the progression works correctly. You have to, you have to do that with scales. Um, so, you know, sergeant scale, we adjusted that. And then, um, the lieutenant scale, um, also increased a little bit. Or actually more than that. No, just a little bit, it's, it's just shy of, uh, I think eight hundred dollars. So that's, that was our proposal scales. I had sent these to you late on Friday, I apologize, we're just trying to finalize everything. I wanted to make sure that the numbers worked. Um, but that's the proposal. So, um, for the pay scales. What we did, we talked about in the beginning of the presentation, there's other considerations, um, cert pay. So our cert pay is currently below most agencies. Um, currently for intermediate, it's twelve hundred a year, advanced is twenty-four hundred and masters is thirty-six hundred. I apologize, the intermediate, oh no, it is twelve hundred, I apologize, sorry. Um.
So the intermediate on the proposed is.
So the proposed would add eight hundred dollars to each of those. So intermediate, we go up to two thousand, advanced would go to thirty-two hundred and masters would go to forty-four hundred. Um, so that's that. So any questions about the cert pay? No? Okay, so at the budget workshop, I believe it's either council member Summerlin or council member Pollard had asked, what else do you guys need? You know, bring us what you guys need. Um, I had Troy kind of develop a little bit of a three-year growth plan, because our scales go up four years, so we can get an idea. Um, so in the next slide, you'll see where we're kind of thinking for the growth plan or Chief Donlap is. Um, this fiscal year, if there's enough revenue that we can capture with taxes, property tax, um, the need would be a detective. Um, you know, if you want to go and explain the reason for that.
You're saying a third detective?
So he, he, here's, here's the issue. The issue is, is we really technically don't have a full-time detective. Because everybody has their own, uh, second and third jobs that they have to do. Uh, such as Lieutenant Gordon, he's a training coordinator, he supervises all the CID. He, uh, does any internal affairs. He does, uh, he, he works with the records management, he's over the records manager. So anytime that we get any type of, of, uh, open records request, he has to help manage that and, and determine how we're going to approach that. Um, uh, he, he's also, uh, he assigns all the cases. Uh, and then he's, he has secondary duties for, uh, doing the citizens academy, he has to prep for that and everything. So he, he has other duties as well. Uh, same thing with, uh, Detective Thompson. He does the firearms training. So firearms training, we do for anywhere from seven to nine times, uh, a year. And on top of that, anytime we have a new applicant, not, not recruit, not a new officer, but every time we have a new applicant, they have to qualify. So he has to take them out, he has to schedule the range and he has to qualify them. So he also is in charge of doing our, um, um, our less than, uh, less than lethal. Um, we have to train on that and we have to do that once a year, so he has to keep up with that. Anytime there's an issue with the, the taser training, uh, tasers, he has to, to, to work those out and order any cartridges or anything like that. So they all have second, secondary, um, um, jobs that they have to do on top of trying to, to do detectives. So their, their caseload for what they have, they're overloaded right now, they have a lot of other duties. And with the addition of officers, which we've had, we have to increase your, your office personnel. Because the, the more, and, and I've shown through monthly reports and, uh, end of year reports, the increase in activity, the increase in arrests, and every time we have that, that creates more work for detectives. So we have to have an additional detective. And, and to add to patrol right now, when you're already short, it's, it's kind of, you've added a position, but it's a mute point, because you've added a position, but you, you can't fill that, because you still have opening positions. So, um, adding a detective this year would significantly, significantly help us out in the office. Um, and then going into the next year, we, we need to admin, uh, a sergeant. Uh, Lieutenant Reivers, uh, he's been doing a two and a half man job for, since he's been in that position. I know because previously, when I was in that position, it was a two-person position. And he brought, when he came to the position, a- added, um, added workload of, of managing the TPCA. And then we added the K nine on top of that. So th- those are overloaded positions. And there's just not enough, um, time in the day to, to, uh, do some of the duties that they have. And so, uh, I wanted to add, a- admin sergeant to that position. And then by the time we get full up on patrol, I'd like to add that fifth position, uh, uh, to, to the remaining four, uh, shift.
So I, I thought today that you were funded for like five perci- per shift, but that includes a sergeant or no?
Yes, it's one sergeant for patrol.
Well, we, a couple of years in a row, we added people, I thought, we were at three.
We, we have, um, we, we've added, we had a couple of shifts that didn't have, uh, well, and also we added the K nine program. So that removed a couple of officers off of the shift, in, into a different shift structure. So we added patrol and I, I can get you those numbers, I have a whole breakout of what we've added each. I think I've sent it to you guys before, um, but I can find it again. By year, how it all, how the structure all has changed on PD's side, for I think the last ten years.
The reason for the sergeant, it's admin sergeant and it would be over, it would be over K nine and it would be over some other duties that require a supervisor to, uh, to, to handle.
It would take some responsibilities from those who.
Correct, correct.
Who have those.
Correct, yes. It would be splitting some of the duties that Lieutenant Reivers was doing. A- again, he's just doing the, the job of two and a half people.
And that's not for this, the admin sergeant would not be for this fiscal year, that would be for next year's for consideration. But we just wanted to present an outlook, so we can kind of prepare of what we're looking for, um, possibly.
Yeah, because we need to do a forecast, because we're already pretty high, so.
Yeah, there's a lot of pending legislation, so that's.
When I said seven million dollars per year for PD, but you're on your way.
Yeah, so there's a lot of legislation that's pending. We don't know how that's going to, the outcome's going to look on that yet.
I need to hear what you.
Legislation, um, a couple in the special session right now, the second special session. Um, so there's a lot going on, um, and you know, we always have to be ready for legislation mandates, anything that changes, right? So we're, we're ready, but, um, this is just an outlook, so that we can future forecast plan. Um, which is, you know, these, 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 uh, positions, you know, if you have any questions about them, Troy can give you more information, but I think we covered most of it.
So how many new people, is it three people is what you're looking at for next year?
No, the only thing is, it'd be that fiscal year, twenty-five, twenty-six detective. We're scattering it out. Yeah. Sorry, I probably should have made that a little bit bigger, the fiscal year notes.
Okay, okay, okay.
Cause we still have to see how everything pans out.
So what are you doing this year when, when Jake leaves? I mean, who's got, he's, if he's doing two and a half jobs, what's going to happen with that work?
Moving one of the sergeants to his position and then.
Is she going to be ready to do all that?
Well, um.
Do we need someone, do we need to put someone in there?
Lieutenant Reivers is going to help, uh, part-time in order to alleviate some of that pressure. And then as well as, um, one of our reserve officers who, uh, is a, who had been with HPD K nine for many, many years. And he's going to help try to, uh, manage some of the, the K nine, uh, some of the duties that were on the K nine. He's going to help with that, to try to alleviate some of that pressure.
Who is that reserve officer?
It, it's Greg Smith.
The, the, the guy that used to run the city here?
No, no, I know.
No.
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 No, no.
Yeah.
It's a common name, okay.
No, he's a, uh, he's a, he wo- he worked for, uh, in HPD K nine for many, many years.
Chief, um, do all of your recruits that are coming in as patrol officers, do they all start at step one?
No, depending, it's, it's all dependent upon their, their years of service. Um, we, we do have a, a, um, secondary scale that goes to their, uh, years of service, up to seven years of service, which would put them at step five. But if they are cadets straight out of the academy, then, then yes, that they would go to, uh, step one.
And with the current vacancies and the budget, we have them at step five, just in case. So that, you know, we might hire someone at step one, step two, but for budgetary reasons. Also, um, I know the question might come up, if Jake's staying on a little bit part-time, how's that affect the budget? You have four vacancies, they will not be filled October one, most likely. So you'll have some budgetary money that'll be there, because the TPCA should only run, um, not super long.
Have a question, if you get, uh, so we don't, so you got a, a opening and you're not going to be able to hire anybody at that entry level, uh, because they're so far behind everybody else. But if, if it's step one, but if you run up to step four, do they get a take-home car? That first year, or do they, are they on probation?
No, they're, they're on probation. So, so the probationary period with, with take-home rides, that's for, that's so we can, we can monitor some things, uh, with the officers.
So whatever level they're at, they're still on probation?
Uh, correct.
Still can't have a take-home ride?
Correct, because you have to, you have to monitor them and, and see where, how, how they drive and everything like that. Uh, just because if they have years of experience, they come from another agency, um, you, you just have to, to watch their driving habits and everything like that. And it's also to, to establish some, some sort of seniority and, 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 uh, things like that.
And you have to, you have to be able to gauge the level of, of, of experience that they have.
Correct.
They may have, you know, four years on the job, but they may not have been on patrol the whole time.
Correct.
It's an evaluation time.
It's, it's an evaluation period, yes.
So you keep metrics on that?
Keep metrics, would, define metrics.
How do you measure one person against another?
Well, it's an individual assessment.
We don't, we don't.
But you're assessed against what others do or are expected to do?
Oh.
There's a standard, right?
There's a standard, yeah.
FTO program.
Yeah, FTO.
The FTO program. And if they complete their FTO program and they go a year on probation and they haven't had any disciplinary action, or they haven't had any accidents or anything like that, then they're welcome to take home.
Okay, so there's standards of measure, okay.
Any other questions about the?
Waiting on the bottom line.
Yes, that's the fun part. My screen came on and now it's gone, Chris.
This is all, this is all very interesting till we get to the bottom line, that's when it counts.
It's, it's the buildup, okay. So budgetary impact, what everyone's been waiting for. This fiscal year, the pay parity, just the pay parity portion would be, and this is all estimated, because, you know, things can change. Not significantly, but like to the dollar amount.
This is for our people that we have today.
Currently staffed, yeah, no additional, would be three hundred and eighty-three thousand on top of what's already in the budget for salaries and wages. And this is a weighted, so it's got taxes, retirement, it's weighted.
And it does say position add for detective.
Yes, so I have it, if you, I have that number there separately. So the pay parity, that top number.
That should say like optional.
That's what I'm saying. So the pay parity is the main issue, right? That's that three hundred and eighty-three thousand dollar, and that's a weighted number. It has taxes and, um, uh, retirement. I couldn't remember the number, the name. That's got that. The cert pay differential would be sixteen eight. Um, to add with current and, you know, with what's current, um, cert pays. And then for the vacancies, I just have them at intermediate for right now. Um, so, and then if you wanted to add that detective position, the weighted for detective, and this is just not salary wage. This is salary, wage, taxes, retirement, um, insurance benefits. Um, it's also other miscellaneous, like uniforms, um, you know.
All that's included in the.
All of that's weighted in there.
And you're, you're going to send this presentation to us after the meeting?
I was going to send it to you and I was also going to publish it on the budget page. Or I can have Kirby put it on the main carousel, we can do either or. I, we can discuss that with Kirby.
Yeah, because I, I want to see what this forecast's out to.
Yes, that's what we're working on right now. Um, but right now, I'm comfortable with the three hundred and eighty-three and the cert pay. Um, the detective, that's going to be something that we talk about, um, if you want to talk about it more, but.
I would probably just bundle up the pic, the pay parity and the certificate pay together, so you got one number for a hint.
Yeah, I just wanted to keep it separate for transparency and also for, um, so you could see it. Um, the fiscal year twenty-six, twenty-seven with our current, um, it would be the, uh, with our current staffing of twenty-eight officers, um, three hundred and fourteen thousand would be added with this pay. That's what you're expecting, it would be a budgetary impact for twenty-six, twenty-seven.
So again, this is, this is three hundred and fourteen over the prior value, correct?
Yes. So, um, and then I did put, I just dropped that number back down, because I don't want to add it into that pay parity number, but you have to remember that you're adding that position as well. And I just use a current number, but obviously there'll be a step raise or there'll be a, um, scale adjustment. And I could get those final numbers to you too, I just wanted to put it in there. And then if you wanted to add the sergeant, that would be the weighted cost of the sergeant, the one hundred and eighty-four thousand.
Before we get, before we get to the, where the rubber meets the road then, this is your best effort. This is your best out-of-the-box thinking to solve this problem.
Yeah.
You would not consider cutting back an officer per shift to save tax period dollars.
So you're already down four.
I'm just, I'm just saying.
Yeah, the situation we're running into is.
Are we going to fill them, right? Should we fill them?
Yes, the, we talked about that, but we, we, we realized the service levels would decrease.
The expectation is, we're going to have somebody go to the park at ten o'clock and then we're going to reduce our staff. How's that going to work? I mean, we, we can't, when guys are, are, are running ragged right now, when, because we're short, we reduce staff. They're going to be continuing to run ragged.
I'm just asking the question, you know, can you do with less and you're, you're telling me no?
We've looked at that possibility, um, in our original scale estimates and just from the calls and everything like that. And our, you know, we're a small community, we want to keep everyone safe, that's what we want to do, so.
Counting what happens if we have to service another hospital. It's going to cost you a lot.
With, with growth and everything, so, so what, what's is the advantage of Shenandoah Police Department? What, why are we looked at throughout the community and law enforcement community as being a, a, a top-tier agency? The reason why we're looked at because of that is because of our response time. And our response time is due to the amount of officers that we have. And, and, and we're, we're good at catching folks. So being proactive policing is, that is how you, you, and I've showed y'all before, um, and the residents, uh, how, how the reduction of, of crime in the residents has been because of the proactive work that we've done. Uh, and, and being proactive, that's how you reduce your crime. Being ra- reactionary by reducing your staff, uh, then the crime's going to go up and we can expect that.
So chief, uh, so we all agree then that this will bring us to a level of public safety that we owe the residents of Shenandoah?
Correct.
Okay.
I just, I just wanted, I, I went over our metrics from, since twenty. I just, I just wanted, I went over our metrics from, since twenty-twenty-two, and that we're flat in virtually all categories, except for motor vehicle accidents without injuries, alarm answers, and a new category that was invented this year called welfare concern, other than that, all categories are flat over, over the years, from twenty-twenty-two till current. I didn't know if you were aware of that.
For, for what? Oh, I'm definitely aware of my stats.
Yeah, but that's, those numbers are, they fluctuate, they're not...
And I've tracked, and I've tracked them by year, that's what I'm saying. Go ahead.
Sure, sure, what do you, what do you, what is your statement?
That's what I'm saying, that whether we've raised officers, even this current year, we're still tracking the same as we did any other year.
Um, I can tell you...
In all categories, except for those ones like motor vehicle accident, no injury...
Did you look at our arrests?
Do I have metrics on your arrests?
That's what I'm saying, so our, our arrests are up, the amount of arrests we've had over the years is up, the, yes, the amount of accidents we've had is almost doubled, so that takes time away from doing regular patrol duties. Anytime you make an arrest, that takes time, it's about time, it's not about numbers, it's about time, time management, and when you have more arrests and you have more accidents, that creates more time, so we need more officers so we can have extra patrol.
You also have a tremendous impact on visibility, the visibility that comes from patrol, we want patrol in our neighborhoods, we want our citizens to see the officers, if you go look, it takes a hundred and sixty-eight hours a week, that's what it takes to cover twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. If you do the math on it, that's four point two officers to cover a hundred and sixty-eight hours, that would be one officer or one and a fraction per shift. When that officer's out of service because they've made an arrest, they're going through the booking process, they could be down and, or up at the county jail for a couple of hours, what do you have if you only have one officer per shift? You have nothing, we have no patrol then, so that's why these departments have to double up, triple up, and they have to get to a level where they can cover that twenty-four-hour period, seven days a week, and have enough visibility on the street to compensate for that downtime that occurs from activity. You also, if you think about it, you know, the, what's the standard work year, twenty-eighty? Two thousand and eighty hours?
Yeah.
Yeah, you're not getting two thousand and eighty hours out of anybody, not, not a single one of our staff members, whether they be police officers or others, because they have vacation time, they might have sick time, um, especially with police officers, though, not only do they have those, they also have court time, they have arrest time, so you see that twenty-eighty available hours for a single officer drops down to nineteen-hundred and something, probably. I wouldn't be surprised if you, if you averaged it out, and even if you weighted it a little bit, you only get about thirty-seven hours a week out of forty hours, so you've got about, you've got that much...
You're optimistic.
Loss of time, loss of visibility, and the visibility is really what you want. Uh, am I right, chief? I mean, you want the visibility out here because that's your biggest deterrent.
Absolutely.
I think there's a misconception because since twenty-twenty, the population in this area has doubled, probably, I, I don't know the exact figures, but we're still operating almost the same level of employment, you know, officers and admin staff from that time period, with a lot more development, a lot more, um, visitors and residents as well, um, the Woodloft multifamily will be going online, um, Sam Moon is possibly putting their multifamily online, um, so there's more, there'll be more need for more officers, unfortunately. This area of Texas has just exploded in the past five years.
And more traffic, chief, you, you cited a number that, uh, that the radar, that the LPRs are, 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 are reading right now.
A hundred and fifty thousand.
When all, all those, when everything is developed, even in our surrounding areas outside of Shenandoah, you're going to have that much more traffic coming through Shenandoah, more shopping, more...
Absolutely, so those are, those are ones, those are readings that are entering into our city.
Yeah.
Those aren't going across the interstate, that, that's going in our city on the service route, so that's a hundred and fifty thousand.
We're a thorough city.
That's, that's what I call our daytime population.
It's our, we're a thorough city, we're not a city that's off of the beaten path, that you have better control, um, of your ins and outs, this is, you're on the, one of the biggest highways in the country, um, it's just, it's what it is.
I'm just curious, where are most of our motor vehicle accidents? Where are they? I've only got a count of them, I don't really know where they...
So, on, on forty-five, it would be northbound service road, um, I mean, northbound main lanes at the, uh, where they exit an entrance ramp to forty-five R over Tamina, because what's happening is, uh, a lot of people are, they're coming on the interstate, and they're looking over to the left to clear their, their left lane to move over, and when they're looking over there, the traffic is stopped for the, the, uh, lane that's exiting, because people get to the service road, and they end up having to stop due to merging traffic, and it backs up on the interstate, and they run into the back of those. That's a big one, and that creates a lot of, uh, major accidents, some are just random on forty-five, uh, you know, people not paying attention, rear-ended people, um, and then at the intersections of...
Do you have like a breakdown, like on the, on, on forty-five, what percent versus the feeders, what percent?
I, I don't have percentages, no, I don't, I don't break down percentages, but...
Or numbers?
No, uh, but on Research Forest, um, at all the intersections, the yellow light, people bustle the yellow lights all the time, and they get hit, so...
But just, let's be clear, that's not really germane to the, to the issue that we're discussing.
No, you can, you can move on and just see how it fits into the budget. This is, this is good, but...
We're, we're, we're trying to get to the level that we provide our residents the level of public safety that we deserve, that they deserve, uh, with the competition from other law enforcement agencies that we have, we have to get there, we have to get to that level, so, I mean, everything else that we're discussing is ancillary to that, we just have to get our police officers to that level.
So that's all I have on the pay parity presentation, um, I do have the property tax presentation next, does anyone need, do you want to take a break, or...
Yeah, take a break.
Okay.
Yeah, let's take a break, time to have a break.
Chris, it's the other presentation. It's the ghost. Still watching the Meg, still watching the shark movie?
And so I just had to direct it to their...
Yeah, I have. Okay. All right, we're going to reconvene our, uh, council meeting, and we're still on, um, item number twelve.
Yes.
Lisa?
So, the last part of this discussion for item number twelve is property tax, right? Um, at the budget workshop, we had tabled the, um, the action item to either, to, um, establish that we're going to go above the NNR, which is a no revenue, no new revenue rate, and to kind of establish a rate for public notice, um, so that's the next item, but I do want to do a quick, I promise it'll be quick, the PD one's a little bit more winded. Property tax presentation, real quick, just to show you kind of what we're looking at, so, um, do you want to pull it up?
So, wait, is this item thirteen?
No, this is just the presentation, thirteen is just a vote, so...
Are you done with that one?
Yeah. Okay, so, um, I got, I got the thing, yeah, we're good, I can see actually the screen this time, that's great, so, the twenty-twenty-five, uh, property tax, uh, presentation, we had tabled this, obviously, because of changes with the pay parity, so, um, just real quick, um, when you look at the general fund, over seventy percent of our general, general government services are funded by sales tax, and when you look at our expenditures at general fund, over fifty percent of our general government services are public safety, so that's police and fire combined, um, so half of our budget goes totally to public safety.
And again, that didn't include...
And again, that didn't include the non-department insurance charges.
No, that will be, we're gonna, we're working on that. Other things we're taking priority, but I'll get those by the.
That's like another 900,000.
That's why I said over 50%, because this chart shows at least 50%, so it's going to be over. So, these are our 2024 values. Our tax rate was 1421 per 100 valuation. Our revenue was about 2.1. With our tax revenue, just for the transparency in the public, there are bond obligations from the Shenandoah Valley project that are still secure with ad valorem taxes. So there is a minimum amount I have to bring in with property taxes, just to pay for the ad valorem. That was a promise that we made with the bondholders during the bond election. So last year, our bond payment amount was about 1.7, so we're netting about 441. These are current numbers, so things have changed a little bit. Or we're going to be receiving, you know, more property tax as bills are being paid. Last year, the residential share was about 30% of the total property tax, and the commercial share was about 70%. So it kind of matches with the water sewer 70-30 split that we've always used as kind of a metric. So, not only is your commercial district providing a lot with sales tax, they're also picking up the majority of the property taxes. This is just kind of a view of that, sometimes people like graphs better, so I just put this into a graph to conceptualize. Also, I just want to show you on that chart, I did take every subdivision and kind of broke out how many accounts are there and what their taxable value was for that whole area, and then kind of did some averages. Obviously, not everyone's bill was the average. There was probably some that were lower, above, but that's kind of just a good average. As you'll see, there's about, just shy of 1,300 residential accounts that we collect property tax on. The biggest one is the Shenandoah Valley, but there, but the largest I have for taxable value, if you break it out by, you know, a percent, is Parquet. Parquet has higher value homes. So, they contribute a lot of property tax with less parcels. So this is just a conceptualization, and on the chart, you can see, the one on the right shows you pretty much the residential versus the commercial and your taxable values for property tax. 2025 values, so, obviously, we have not established tax rate, but the no new revenue rate was 13 cents per 100 valuation, and the voter approval rate this year is just 0.2037 per 100. There were some questions about why that number is the number it is, based on the understanding that some of the public had that there was a max of 3.5%, it could go up. That's not totally true. The calculation is actually based on several factors. It's based on your MNO, it's based, you know, that rate, and then there are, there's a thing called unused increment, so if a government doesn't go up to the max that they can for a voter approval rate, that kind of banks for three years, and you can elect to use that if you would like to, which, it's kind of a, it's to promote keeping your taxes low, but if there's a situation, you have that flexibility, which we're now seeing with pay parity, correct? So that's what.
Just for the audience who's watching, then, MNO is?
Maintenance and operations, it's not what's tied to your debt service, which is your interest in sinking, which is your bond payments. So this will go into your general fund, revenue to fund government services. This year, our bond payment is about 1.8, that's required of tax, and then the certified taxable values, it's still trending about that 30-70 split, but it's a little bit more residential than it is commercial. I mean, it's more commercial than it was residential, sorry. And you'll see, I kind of mimicked the one before, it shows you the taxable value and the, you know, the share among the communities, and then the commercial at the bottom. Also, just a graph, sometimes easier to conceptualize that way. So, our 2025 values, so as I stated, our new revenue rate, so pertaining to the question that was asked during the general discussion, the $700,000 number. So, I, so with the taxable value that's been certified, and if we kept that same tax rate 1.42, 1421, we would have brought in about 2.15, and when you take out the debt service requirement, it's 702,000. So I was pretty close in my calculation of estimate, if we kept that 142 number, one number. Obviously, we need to probably go above that for the pay parity. The no new revenue at 13 cents would only yield 488,000 to our general fund, that's going to put us in a deficit. So, the no new revenue rate unfortunately is probably not going to be looked at. What I did on these charts is I did a one cent increment up to the max that we could do, so you can see how those numbers fluctuate. So with, when you look at the pay parity forecast for this year, if you add that detective disposition, and you also put the cert pay differential, you're looking at about $560,000 you'll need, in addition to what's in the budget, right? So, 1421 would break you even, based on our current budget. So you technically probably should bring in a number that's closer to 1.2 or above that, if you want to have a little bit more flexibility, which would bring you up to at least 1721. So that's kind of what you're looking at. The maximum rate we can go to before it triggers an election would be 0.2036, which is that last line item, so it would yield about 1.8 into your general fund, after the tax payments comes out, the requirement for that. So any questions about that? And I have this chart.
So you're saying to break even with all the pay parity stuff is?
It's at least 1721.
1721, okay.
And that would be still, we can look at like, you know, that's just 1721, you can increase it by a thousandth of a cent. I just did, that chart was like hundreds of lines long, so they condensed it for more of an easy digestible view, but I can provide that to you if you would like, I have it. It breaks it down by each thousandth cent.
Does this, is my math off, is that a 20, 21% increase? We'd need to.
What, the increase to the actual tax rate or to the revenue?
No, the tax rate. So to go in from 0.1421, you said we need to go to 1, 0.1721 to break even? Is that right?
Yeah, it's 1721.
21%?
Yes.
Lisa, so I'm sorry. Does this calculation assume a 100% collection?
Yes. That's why, well, yes, and that's why I said you might want to have a little bit more flexibility with it. Last year, we had a 97%, but it's because at the time of certification, we had a big property owner that was outstanding, they have now paid up, we finally got that, so. But there are, every year, there's outstanding amounts that we don't collect on. So, what I did was, as you saw from the first couple of slides, I broke it out by each neighborhood, kind of what the tax share is, so you can see. So, before we get into this, though, we do have the highest home state exemption that's allowed by law of 20%. We also have 100,000, I mean, 100,000 exemption for over 65 and disabled, and then there are several residents that do have the veterans disability on top of that as well. That's why some of these averages, don't take them as, that's what your tax bill's going to be, because a lot of factors go into that. And I was hoping I had a little bit more time, but I was going to try to break it out by, if you're over 65 and stable and you have these exemptions, this is what your tax bill might look like, but I just didn't have that time, but I can add that to the presentation after the fact, before I upload it. So going to the next slide, and I apologize, when I saved it, it brought this title down a little bit, but the tax rate, if we did the 1421, just to break even, your average tax bills would look like that for each community, and once again, don't take it as that's your tax bill, it's just an average, and it breaks it down, so, and then I put the one for the 2036 tax rate on the side, on this next, as well. I also did the math for you, so don't, don't try to do some math, I got it for you on the next slides. So, if you look at the next slide, the change, if you went with the 1421, the change in the tax, average tax bill from 2024, is that green column, the second to the last column, kind of shows you. The negatives are because there's house sales that basically added exemptions onto it, that's why your tax value went down a little bit. So if someone sold a house to someone that was over 65, they have a higher exemption than the previous year, so that's why there's a little fluctuation there. Also, the data set that I get from the county is very large, so there's a lot of parcel numbers, so, so that's why like Boulevard Green has a lower, says Malaga Forest, and the Reserve at Grovins Mill has kind of decreased. So, and then on the right, obviously, it's for the tax rate of 20, 0.2036, so it shows you, that second, the last column would be the increase from last year's tax bill average. You can tell it does go up significantly, however, I do want to point out that the bulk of it is still being commercial. You can see that at the bottom, the percentage breakouts. And then my next slide has the difference between these two tax rates, so you can see what the difference was between the bills. So if you look at the next one, the average Shenandoah tax bill, the average, and I broke it out, payment, or the last slide has the differential, but what I did is I took an average payment per month, because when you look at it, oh wow, $600 is a lot for a tax bill, but when you conceptualize it over a month, you know, it's per month, and then I did a per day, it kind of shows you a little bit different look at it. So, that's those numbers there. And then, basically, the differential between the highest and the break even tax rate, we'll call it, it's not official term, but we'll call it that for now, is on this last slide. So, if you went from 1.421 to the 2.3, 2.036, you can see the average Shenandoah tax bill difference between those two numbers. And then I divided it once again, per month, per day. So, that's the max. Obviously, I could run these numbers again with a rate that you guys want to see, I would suggest that you go with nothing lower than 1721. There are some legislation items that I'm coming across that could compromise the tax calculation going forward, so it's really what we want to look forward looking. Those are, they're significant increases, they're not huge. Most, most people's tax bill, Shenandoah's, it's not your two largest loans, I mean, not loans, sorry, Conner, SC, and Montgomery County are the largest portion of your tax bill, Shenandoah. And there is the, and when you look at your tax bill, Shenandoah also had elected several, many years ago, to offset some of their taxes with sales tax, so that goes into the consideration of the tax rate as well, with the tax office calculations. So, when you look at your tax bill, there's a little, it's italicized, and it says that the city Shenandoah didn't have a sales tax, your bill would be increased by, it's typically on average about $500, $600, what I've seen. So, that's pretty much what you're looking at with those tax rates. And for tonight, we can make the motion to go above the NNR, and if you just want to set a rate for the public hearing, but we can adopt a different rate, you're not set to what you're putting in your public notice. Because there's a public hearing that goes on before it, and there's discussion.
How will the tax rate that we set next meeting impact the new NNR in subsequent years?
It will raise up, because your NNR is basically, it takes your last year's parcels with no improvements, no additions, and it matches, so say if you bring a million dollars in, right, next year, they're going to say, what rate do you need to be at to only bring in a million dollars? And that's how that fluctuates. So, that's what, that's, so, we're built out, we're very close to being built out, right? We've had most of our growth in the 2008, I was looking back at sales tax numbers and property tax valuations back to 2008, that's all I have from previous finance directors ready at my, to review. Like in 2008, I think the total property, the sales tax you brought in was like 2 million, so, and your tax rate was like?
Do you have a slide then that will show a tax rate revenue with all of the categories that we had deducted from it? For all the departments? So if you had department totals, and you had revenue, and you're subtracting, do you have something like that?
What would be your base for the, like, the max you can go to?
Well, you could play what if on the rate to cover your expenses.
Well, it's pretty much.
You're saying, you're saying 17, 17 what?
172 would be the lowest I go with, because you add in that 560,000 for the pay parity, and if you want to add that position of the detective and the cert pay, and then the 700,000 that you needed just to break even, that would yield that number, that 1721.
So that will cover pay parity and it'll cover additional resources?
What's currently in the budget, yes.
I mean, ones that we saw today?
Yes, plus what's already been in the budget.
Based on the projections in prior slide deck.
Yeah.
So, to go with the projections that the chief has, for what, three years from now? I think we need to set our tax rate base so we can cover that in case we're not able to ever change our rate again, except more than 1%?
So there is a possibility, if you want to go with that, to be a little bit more aggressive this year, so that you set up to make sure if anything changes, we are, we have that, that buffer, yes.
I'm afraid if we don't, then we're going to be to the bare bones, and if we, if we have to increase our police department just to keep our safety at a normal level, we're going to have to cut everything in all other departments if we only have a 1% raise that you can take per year, based on what the.
Yeah, they went back to, they went back to conference, they said, because that amendment was insane. I'll be on public record on that one for the SB 10.
Does that make sense to y'all? I mean, you said.
Yeah, I agree.
Because if not, we're going to be cutting to the bone.
They do a lot of insane things, like only allow tourist revenue.
Yeah.
From hotel tax, that's insane.
They're very aggressive on top.
So we can be aggress, we can be a little bit more aggressive, and like, and like, I was hoping I could have, but basically, you're getting to a point that you have always had your sales tax increase over year, being able to supplement your property tax, right? You're now getting to the point, because you're built out, you're, these two little columns are getting even again, right? So that's the concern, is that you don't have new development and new growth to offset. We do have some things coming on, like pluckers, some of the multifamilies, but not enough, like what we've seen in the past 15 years, you know what I'm saying? So.
Yeah, you said, like, Consul and Pollack said, we still have to look, not only next year, but the next couple.
Exactly. So if you want to be aggressive this year, you can always go down, you know, you can always, every year, review where you're at and go with a lower rate, that's totally fine, but yeah, if you want.
The important is that we have a little more wiggle room.
Yes, it gives you a little bit more of a buffer.
Before, yeah, before we hit the voting number.
Yeah, and I really wanted to emphasize, when you look at these numbers, you know, it looks like it's a, it's a big increase each, you know, for most average, but then you look at the bottom line, and your commercial district is just bringing in most of your property tax. So, what we could look at going for next year, for next year's budget, I mean, tax season, is that maybe we look at the over 65 and disabled exemption again, because, you know, in case there's a situation that the rates come in higher again as well, so that you're taking care of your more fixed income, more vulnerable, but you're also keeping your, your tax revenue where it needs to be.
Do you have any national projections for the next three to five years on inflation projections?
So inflation has been, it's been like throwing a dart at a map.
Wait, I have a crystal ball right here.
Inflation has been Joseph knows, I know.
Yeah, well, if we're, if we're looking in the future of only being able to adjust 1%, and you're, you're, you're going to be a third of what, at least, of what inflation's going to be.
Yeah.
Well, we're not only just going to have to cut, we're going to have to cut, cut, cut to almost nothing.
Yeah, so I have, I have a kind of a five-year loose forecast going for expenditures. It's really hard on my part, because, you know, the biggest problem is legal mandates that come down, right? The state could say tomorrow, every pond has to be inspected three times a year, like, we have no idea what could come down from legislation sessions, correct? So, what I kind of do is just build kind of like a three to So what I kind of do is just build kind of like a 3% to 5% on some things I think that might go up based on contract. And I kind of forecast it out that way. Inflationary is a little hard, just because it is, it's a, it's a shot in the dark. Especially since 2020, since COVID, it's been a shot in the dark with what we're gonna be seeing with inflation. So we, I can look at that. I can see if there's any projections out there that could kind of, for the Houston area especially.
Please, I think that that needs to be part of the projections that we make, on the forecast that you're making, what we're gonna have to have just to keep the city running.
Yeah, I do typically have 3% to 5% just as a natural progression.
And say, this is what it has to be then, and then look at what we have.
We know the salary is built out, that's the good part. And that's the majority of your budget, right? Is salaries and wages. So we can, we can go back and look at some of our line items and see what we might fluctuate.
We don't want to get to where we're not having employee raises anywhere else in the, in the city except for the police department.
Right now, yeah.
You wanted to have a 3%.
We're, we're, we're meeting internally, the directors on the civilian side, to figure out something going forward. That'll be after budget workshop, really. We're kind of all, we've got a lot of projects going on.
So our decision is to go 0.1721 or above?
Well, above the no new revenue rate of 13 cents. And if you want to put it for the max, we can put the public notice for that, but you can always go lower. You don't have to vote on that, you know, if you just want to put that as a placeholder, it's up to you.
That's what I'd recommend.
About 0.2021.
Yeah, just a little bit below.
2021?
That's where I was at two weeks ago.
You were pretty close, you're a smart guy, man.
If that's what you, we can do that, and then we can bring back to.
That's my motion, chief.
A second.
Well, we're not at that, we're not at that point yet.
Oh, we have to go into item 13.
So let's see my presentation, hope it was informative.
Are you gonna, are you gonna update your spreadsheet so that we look at the PD number plugged in there?
I can add something to it, yeah.
Yeah, you would update that for me to get that number in there, because that was the only really floater out there.
Yeah, and I do want to, when I talked to.
I don't need the projection for the future years in there, just for this year.
And I do want to emphasize, we pay, we outsource our fire to Woodlands Fire Department. They are part of our public safety budget when you look at it as a whole. They, we supplement that with sales tax right now. I was doing some digging, because I saw that Oak Ridge North went with their NNR. I was curious of what, how they were able to do that. They have had some sales tax growth, so they brought in about 3.8, which, in addition, a million. But I also thought it was interesting, they actually, all those residents have to pay EST 10 cents per their valuation.
They pay what?
They pay 10 cents per, an extra tax bill, basically.
For the EST?
An EST. So I would like to, with public safety is the majority of our budget, and we're supplementing it with sales tax, so we don't have to go into that situation with our residents. And the Woodlands Fire Department is a great fire department. They have a really high IOs, ISO rating, they're very responsive, and we like working with them. So I think that's a conception that you have to look at as well. Because if we did have to go to an EST, that's another 10 cent tax bill. You know, on your already, per valuation, sorry, not just 10 cents, but per valuation. So I do want to emphasize that, because the majority of our budget's public safety, so.
So are we ready to move on to item 13 then?
Yes. Okay, so then item 13, Mayor and Council, is just to make a motion to go above the NNR for, if you want to go with the NNR, you can make that motion.
I'll entertain that motion.
Our motion, 0.2021.
We have a motion to adopt the property tax rate at 0.2021 by Consulman Broad, seconded by Consulman Pollard. Any additional discussion?
I hate to write taxes on anything, but, anybody, but we have to look out for the future of our city, and we can't afford to lose employees, especially can't afford to, to have a reduction in the service that we're given for our police department, our citizens.
Any, any idea how that compares to the Woodlands Township or City of Conroe?
It should be online.
Yeah, so City of Conroe, their rate's higher than ours.
Isn't it like 3, 42 cents or something?
Oak Ridge was 40 cents, they've got one with their NNR of 36 cents, but they have the sales tax offset now that we used to bank on. The county raise is going above their NNR as well.
Do we know if, if the City of Montgomery or Oak Ridge, how much they increase their police spending by?
So Oak Ridge is still doing their review. We're one of the few agencies that's pushing forward quicker from our discussions. And that's, we, we, you know, we have vacancies.
I didn't see anything from Oak Ridge, but Montgomery was actually just scaling back just a touch.
So Montgomery County has a special district, though, that, so you know how we have the MDD? So a portion of our sales tax goes towards MDD.
The City of Montgomery.
Yeah, City of Montgomery, what they do is, instead of having like an MDD, they split their tax rate for sales tax to, it's called like a law enforcement. I can't remember, can you remember what the, what the actual term is? I can't remember, but it's a special purpose district.
Remember what it is?
So they have money going into that for law enforcement. We ought to use.
It's dedicated.
Yes. I, I'm not particularly in favor of that, because I think it's better for MDD or like an economic development corporation, because, especially our area, we're very project heavy with roads and infrastructure. So, but that's how they kind of fund a lot of their stuff. So I don't know exactly how their budget looks right now, but I can look at it.
All right, let's, let's vote on this. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Let's move on. It should be easy now. Item 14, discussion of possible action to adopt the minutes of the June 11 and June 25, 2025, and July 9, 2025, regular meetings.
Motion to adopt them all three as read.
We have a motion to adopt all three as read by Consulman Broad, seconded by Consulman Robinson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 15, discussion of possible action to ratify the accounts payable for July 2025.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve of Consulman Raymaker?
Second.
Seconded by Consulman Robinson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 16 is gonna be canceled today as our, our representative from the city club, Mr. Charlie, is not able to appear today. We postponed that. Item 17, city administrator updates.
Just a reminder, the city hall is closed for Monday for Labor's Day, and the angel lights were delivered yesterday.
Oh, great, great. Good to hear. All right, thank you. Consul and for you. Consulman Raymaker.
I'm gonna pass, I'm gonna send you guys a couple of questions then, so you can get out of here for tonight. But I want them answered before the next meeting.
Consulman Pollard.
Wanted to make a note that in this report, the executive summary that administrator has, city administrator has turned in, that for the second month in a row, our Shenandoah hotels have reflected shortfalls. Business is getting tougher out there, and we have to promote more and more. And that's even more reason for starting this oversight of CDB. We need to step up our promotion other than reduce it and have to get more aggressive, because we've got more competitors than we ever had, not just for the hotels, but for all the businesses here that also keep our taxes lower.
Consulman Broad.
I'm good.
Consulman Robinson?
Well, just a, an observation. If we'd had our park plan in place two years ago, we would have been able to apply for the local parks grants, which also will pay for parking.
Yep, yep, that's true.
That's all.
I have nothing tonight. We're gonna retire to the executive session at 8:59. According to Texas Open Meetings Act, Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, follows Texas Government Code 551.087, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations, and Texas Code 551.071, consultation with the city attorney.